Stand or say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next would be the approval of the minutes. Everybody read the minutes? Any additions, corrections? Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
They have to make the personal choice.
Oh, they're motion. Complete the votes.
Motion by Commissioner Miller to approve the minutes, seconded by Commissioner Mattery. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Minutes approved. Next would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections?
Yeah, like, I got road issues to talk about.
Okay.
I did too, so we just put it.
Okay, well, we'll just do 10:45 to 11:00 for road issues. Just put it at the end. Were there any other amendments to the agenda? Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Holm to approve the agenda as amended, seconded by Commissioner Mattery. Is there any more discussion on the amended agenda? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Agenda approved. First item on the agenda will be an update on public nuisance, 8080 Highway 83 South in Lynton, under old unfinished business. Sheriff Sanders isn't here at the moment, but Eric Clayton did come down, I believe, on Thursday, and then they came for a day, and then they realized they needed another day, and they came Friday, and they filled three dumpsters, four? No, I- Took two away, and there's two still there, but it sounds like, it sounds like Cameron was hospitable, but somewhat interfering, wasn't, you know, wasn't happy about it, but, I don't know. He kind of made the clean, didn't he, nothing about it, but we've been talking about it quite a lot also, to be fair, I mean, I understand he's upset, but, they did clean quite a bit out, I mean, I think they kind of satisfied the judgment essentially.
I think so.
It's, it's probably not perfect, but it's a drastic improvement, but, uh-
It doesn't seem very accurate, but you got pictures for it.
I mean, it sounds like either Arrow or the Sheriff's Department took some pictures just to kind of show, you know, basically, the, they satisfied the judgment, didn't do anything else, so there's probably still remnants there and things that might not, you know, be good for some people, but it satisfied the judgment, it's back to a messy yard and not a total public nuisance, so-
So, is he gonna, he'll get, he'll get bill for it now?
He's gonna get the bill if he doesn't pay it, I think it's gonna get assessed on his property taxes, right? That's how that process goes, so, I guess, unless anybody's got anything else to add, I kind of consider it a matter of closing for now, so, if that's the case, we can take that off, old and unfinished business, because it's neither old nor unfinished. Has anybody's got anything to add? Okay? Well, then, we'll move on right away. Uh, next item on the agenda will be Ashley Ruby with Lewis and Clark Regional Development and Regional Livestock Development Planning Program.
Yeah, well, not Ashley.
Well, my name's Aaron, so I don't ever just assume anybody's saying that thing, so.
Good morning, Commissioner. Uh, I'm Brett Dexter with the Executive Director. Um, I was supposed to be in Washington DC, but my plan's changed, so I'm able to be here in person, so, uh, not that Ashley can't handle it, but, uh, I got here doing other things this morning, so, uh, a couple of things I wanted to do today, uh, basically two things. One, kind of update you on what the regional council's been up to, um, what we have going on, some of the new programs, um, and then two, talk about, uh, the regional livestock planning, um, opportunity that we have. I do have a couple packets here to hand out, you're gonna want to pass those around. So, in there, the first page of that is, uh, basically just a one-page update of some of the programs that we have, um, as, if you're not familiar, um, with the, with what we do, obviously, we have four separate companies that follow under our, what we do for the Regional Development Group. One is the Regional Development Council, which does our gap funding, I know I've talked to you guys about that in the past, about how we do small business lending, uh, we assist businesses, technical assistance, um, all that stuff, we do, uh, we also have a certified development company, does long-term fixed-rate financing, so if you're doing larger projects, um, involving, uh, buildings and land acquisition, construction, and stuff like that, that's where, um, that falls in. And we have the Community Works, which is our housing organization, which does single-family down payment classes, culture class assistance loans, um, it does multifamily loans, um, it does multifamily development, um, and it also does, uh, multifamily lending, so if you have somebody that's putting up apartment buildings, uh, we usually do that normally, um, in the affordable, so it has to be, uh, we have guidelines to make sure that they stay up affordable apartments, we don't do market rate, um, but in small communities that have a housing shortage, I mean, if there are some gaps on some market rate, uh, we will, we will consider that too, so, uh, we do that on the housing, help you guys on your housing side. And the last one, the organization we have, is our property management company, um, and so we do property management for, uh, affordable apartment units. Again, we're not here to compete with, uh, with market, um, so on the, if somebody is out there, um, you know, doing property management for apartment building stuff, on market rate stuff, uh, we're not here to compete, we don't do that. We do the stuff that's income restricted, because income restricted has all of the different certifications and all the different things that you have to do with HUD and USDA and our 2000 Finance Agency, and so, um, we have the expertise in doing that, so we do that for a number of different properties throughout the state, so, um, so those are basically the organizations that we do, and so we're kind of a one-stop shop for doing economic and community development, uh, when you guys have needs in your area. A couple of the new things that, that are out that I wanted to touch on, um, one is the, uh, the new revolving loan fund that we just got, uh, about a year and a half back, is the meat and poultry intermediary lending program, I think I talked to you guys about that last year. Uh, there are still funds available, um, in that to be lent out. That is, if anybody is in, anything in the, uh, meat and poultry processing industry, so butcher shop, um, anything like that, if they're looking at building, expanding, anything, um, they could kind of us for a low-interest loan. Uh, we've done a couple of projects, we did, uh, we helped with global expansion, um, the new, if you're familiar with the new, uh, butcher shop up in Steel, that was a hundred percent financed by that meat and poultry processing, uh, loan, so, if you have, um, people in your, in the area here that do want to expand, so I know that's a huge, uh, need in the area, workforce is always one of the big issues with them, right, so, we can't get people there for them, but if they do want to expand, uh, make sure they reach out to us, because it is a low-interest loan, um, it'll go up to 30 years, um, so it's really attractive financing for them, if they want to do that expansion and, uh, into that. The other thing, is I want to talk about, um, that we're working on right now, is the, uh, Regional Livestock, uh, planning, and what that is, that's a program that's through the, uh, North Dakota, um, Department of Agriculture, and what they're doing is they are, um, it's a, it's a program where all the counties have the opportunity to, uh, to do, to have planning performed for them, um, where the, uh, organi, where, basically what'll happen is, uh, Department of Ag, uh, grants us the money, and we hire a consultant, the consultant does, comes in and does a plan, and that plan's gonna entail, um, going out and, and basically, the bottom line and result of it is gonna be, you'll get a map of your county, and what it'll have is it'll have kind of the good, better, and best places to locate, um, any like the livestock facilities and things like that, um, and so what they'll do is they'll look at water access, electric access, um, they'll use the GPS mapping and stuff, and what they're gonna perform that, and they'll put that into, into kind of a, a map for you guys, where you can see that, and there is a, an example in your packet, um, there is an example of, of one they did for, um, I believe it was Horse County, uh, up here in South Dakota, and so you can see kind of the final result of what those reports look like. The nice thing about those reports are, it is a confidential report, so it will go to your planning department, but it is not open to the public, so when they got passed through the legislature to do this project, um, they made sure of doing that, because not everybody wants to have the information on their land and, and whether it's good or bad, um, out there, right? So a lot of landowners probably wouldn't want BS, thrilled about participating, so they said, "This is confidential." So what would happen is, basically, if somebody came to you for a planning and zoning issue, they wanted to do a feedlot, right? They, you could, you could go to your planning department and say they want to do a feedlot over here in this section, and then they, then they can look at that map and say, "That's a good location," or that's not the best location for it, so it gives you a tool to do it. The nice thing is, it costs you guys nothing. The, the funds, um, it's, uh, the funds are, like, so they're granted to us, and we just hire the consultant, so we're kind of a passer on it to get that consultant there, but, um, there is no cost to the county to have that. Uh, all you have to do is sign a resolution, um, there's a sound resolution here, I actually have a filled-out resolution, if you wanted to do that, um, do that, and then we just take it from there. Um, we would probably be contacting a couple of people at the county for information here and there, but it would just be, uh, as far as, um, anything, any responsibilities that you guys, you would not have any responsibilities for that, so, if you, uh, if you have any more, I know I set that out, I think I set it out earlier, um, but if you have any questions on that, you can certainly contact us, or you can talk with, uh, either Ashley or Haley at the Department of Ag. Other than that, I put in, uh, in your packet, um, the usual, uh, numbers that we have for what we've done in the county, um, and across the board, um, we've, except we've expanded significantly, so we do have funds available, as you guys have projects coming, and we're more than happy to, to sit down and, and talk about them, so, with that, I'll open up to any questions you guys have.
What would this pertain, if I can ask, would this pertain also to the development of like recreation?
It would look at economic development, I'm not sure exactly how detailed it's gonna go into the economic development, but it will have, because it'll show like the water and stuff, so it is not just livestock, um, it will have, um, the better development areas that you could look at, yeah.
So we've got developed areas and rooftop areas, but it's not paved structure going into the one development? Would there be funds available for something like that, of upgrades of the roads?
From the regional county, I mean, that's what we do. Uh, we don't do roads, uh, we, that's not one of the things that we can do under what we do. Um, normally, we're, most of our lending is for small businesses.
Okay, okay.
There is, what, the one thing that we do do is if there are, um, if you have projects like that, we provide technical assistance, and so what we can do is that we can, we'll go and, and look for other organizations, like if it's, um, North Dakota Parks and Rec, or somebody might have money available, grant money, we try to keep up on those grants that are out there, that are coming up, so it might not be through us, but we can, but we will, we'll do the labor to try to find if there's something out there for you, so you just have to, uh, contact our office, and we will, you know, we'll, we'll do that labor and see if there is some grant funding out there for stuff like that, yeah.
So is there anything for small businesses, like grocery stores, or grants for that kind of stuff?
Most of the grants for grocery stores, uh, there's still a few out there, but they're mostly energy efficiency grants, you know, so they do like a portion of it, that's a little loan, we've done, we've done a number of those, uh, but outside of that for grocery stores, um, a lot of, a lot of the stuff that we're seeing, like, even like in this meat and poultry, it, they, when the, when the, uh, the rules come off, because it's federal money when that comes out, they say, on that one, you can't do production A, and you can't do retail. Those are the two MCAs that you can't do, but you can do everything else in between, so we can do anything in the, in the, um, food chain industry, once it revolves back in, um, so there is, there is some, but it's mostly just energy efficiency, so it's not, you know, so if they wanted to go and upgrade all of their freezers, um, it's not, it's not an easy process, because they have to do energy audits and things like that, um, but if they were like doing a, a simple expansion or something like that, it's gonna be probably a little interest loans.
Anybody else have any questions for me?
All right, well, if you want to participate in that planning, we're trying to get all the counties signed up, this is, I did complete one for you, if you don't like it, you can do your own, but, if you want to, and then you can just email that, if you want to do that, you can just email that up to me, so, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming, Brett. Next item on the agenda will be to appoint a board member to MS County Public Health, um, so, Lyle Kenner took over a term for, I believe it was Alice Scott's, and she had, you know, a partial term left over, and so that's why this appointment, you know, kind of just, for some reason, kind of snuck up on us or whatever, because it wasn't kind of on the regular appointment of terms, um, I asked Dr. Kenner if he wanted to serve on the board again, and he said, uh, that he would like to, um, I know there's been some meetings he hasn't made, especially from the springtime, he's pretty busy with capping, but, uh, the issue brought up was that the meeting is at 5:15, which is kind of difficult, and I, I kind of agreed with him, I, I missed a couple meetings just because it's just too close to quitting time for things, so, um, he would like to serve on the board, and then we're gonna look at, seeing if we can adjust that meeting time to kind of fit a few more, you know, because there's a fair amount of them kind of work in the hospital-type setting, and it's kind of easy for them to get there, easier, I should say, and, you know, for the couple of us that are not working there, it's a little bit harder, so we're gonna look at maybe changing some meeting times, so with that, um, he would like to take it again, and so my opinion would be that we just reappoint Dr. Kenner to a full term.
Do you need a motion for that?
We do need to appoint him, we need a motion then, to appoint him, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the appointment.
Commissioner Mattery makes a motion to appoint Lyle Kenner back to the MS County Board of Public Health.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion? The appointment of Dr. Kenner? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Dr. Kenner is reappointed, so, next items on the agenda are, there's just several utility permits here, one is for South Central Regional Water District in Solah, line for a water line crossing 12th Avenue Southeast from the Northwest Corridor, Section 18, Township 133, Range 75, to the Northeast Corridor, Section 13, Township 133, Range 76, and then there's also a couple utility permits for back communications, very fiber optic cable on 74th Street Southeast and 9th Avenue Southeast, and also 83rd Street Southeast and 84th Street Southeast, so, um, those, I believe, they're probably just wanting, I believe they're plowing fiber optic in the right of way is what they're hoping to do, so that's right, that's about it, and then you have the utility, it's probably a bore under the-
That's a bore, isn't it?
I would imagine, and usually the permit states it.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the board project, let's stand.
So, Commissioner Mattery makes a motion to approve the utility permit for South Central Regional Water, is there a second to that? Seconded by Commissioner Holm. Is there any more discussion? Everything's signed out here, I mean, I think for the most part, South Central knows the rules and knows how to do it, I would, I would say it's probably been defined, so, for the motion, and second, is there any more discussion on the utility permit for South Central Regional Water? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Permit approved, and then the, uh, two utility permits for back communications.
That's fine, the transfer's boring into it.
No, uh, that one here, from the looks of it, I believe it's probably gonna be bores under the approaches and then plowing, I believe, in the, in the right of way, because it looks like it's the same project that, looks to me like they're coming north of Lynton, on 9th Avenue, kind of on my place, and they're gonna go 74th, past like Brew Shots, isn't it, and then get to the highway, and from there, they're gonna go highway elbow to Hazel from that way out. That's all presumption, but judging by this stuff, this plan here, looks like that's all matching that, so, looks like they're gonna bore under like 76th, and then get on the other side of it, then plow, and then anytime they get a crossing, looks like they have bores scheduled here, so, I believe Kane H is doing most of the work, so.
Kane H?
I'm pretty sure, because they were the ones outstating this path and stuff, so, um, I don't see anything, anything different here in that side. Anybody else want to work on their plans, looks like they have, I think the different location spots, and see their crossings on the roads, it looks like they have bores planned for those.
Those on 84th and 83rd, that would be all in that package.
Or 84th and 83rd, before they're south, so that must be a different, yeah, so that must be this second, or no, I got three. Yeah, so this looks like the same type project, looks like they're boring in a couple locations, and then it must be kind of plowing in the right of way, right in the edge of the right of way, they're out 30 feet, so they're basically going right on the outside edge of the right of way, so, I think that's what they're doing. Yeah. I foresee there being an issue, I guess, so. Commissioner Hare makes a motion to approve both. Commissioner Hare makes a motion to approve both utility permits for back communications for underground, for very fiber optic cable. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Holm, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Permits approved. Okay, next item on the agenda is Commissioner Miller with Water Hemlock Weed, turning into Actus Weed in MS County. Mr. Miller, floor is yours.
I received a call last month here about Water Hemlock down in the south end of the county. It's a very obnoxious weed, it's actually one of the most poisonous ones in the state, if not the whole country, so I asked CJ to give a kind of talk, and give us an update on this.
All right, so, uh, Water Hemlock is a native weed to-
Can't quite hear you, see it? There you go.
Miller?
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, Water Hemlock's a native weed to North America, it's a perennial, it, I don't think it's a problem, uh, if it was a real problem, you guys would notice a lot more die off the cattle in the spring, or in the fall, uh, I sprayed some of it on the eastern section of the county before, uh, we were in there spraying, just to see if it sprouted that. It does, uh, become more palpable after being sprayed, so its lethality actually increases. The plant structure itself is a hollow plant, it's got tubers in the base of it that run the length of the plant, um, the middle portion of the plant is fairly non-lethal, but the further down you go, so that's where your grazing issues come into play, the cattle, uh, you know, forage and the eat, the further down that plant base they go, towards the root system, is where all of the poison in the hemlock actually is stored, and it travels through the plant, up those hollow tubers, and once it actually gets to like the seed stage, the ends of the plants, with those little flowers in that, it'll actually get them all, um, feeds on them, and those are agri-able as well. Now-
DJ, excuse me, pull that up, there's guys in country, in the back, the other ranchers. Please, yep, there you go.
So, you've got, uh, this from the leg register to USDA, uh, different studies, whether it was in Minnesota, Michigan, uh, that have put studies out on this, it has a, you can, your cattle basically die due to searing, so they're, uh, they'll either die from something gaining from seizures, or their respiratory, respiratory system will collapse, and that can happen anywhere from 15 minutes to three hours, I mean, there is no, there's no treatment for it, you know, cattle gets it there, if they don't step it off, they're gonna die. Uh, save with humans, there's no treatment for that, I mean, you can get, put on life support and hope that the toxin runs its course, but the issue with that is, you have to ingest it, so, I mean, the plant by itself out in the wild isn't hurting anybody, you actually have to take it in and digest it in order to get the poison. Uh, now, the producer that is concerned with this weed, I haven't actually laid eyes on this plant yet, um, I went down in the area and I looked for it, um, where the creek runs through its land, it is a, it's a wetland plant, so if there's any little, uh, marsh areas, or creek waves, water waves, whatever the case may be, that's where this thing is gonna grow, and, um, I went down south to where the start of the water runs, I couldn't find any, I did find some other plants that looked similar, um, they're, this plant in itself actually is mistaken for a variety of different weeds, uh, some of them are edible, like parsnip, uh, wild carrots, elderberry, and then I went north where the creek runs through, and I didn't find any there either, but I didn't go way apart north, uh, I just found a section or so north of where the water lines. Now, if it actually is Water Hemlock, then, I mean, I talked about it with my board, and my board is kind of waiting the options of whether to put it on, the noxious weed list from the county or not, I'd make the phone call to NDSU to even see if we could put it on the noxious weed list, because it is a native species, they said that we could, um, if we think that it's a problem. Um, I, they hadn't made a decision by the end of our meeting, so I imagine by our next meeting, they'll have made a decision whether or not to add it to our list, and if so, then there's, then we can go in and, you know, find it for sure if it is legit, uh, Water Hemlock, or if it's just mistaken, and, um, you know, we can go about our business, they're either, uh, trying to eradicate it, or just enforcing it so neighbors who might have it on their property can, you know, be aware of it, control it, uh, stop it spreading, although, like I said, being a native species, it's always been here, and it's probably always going to be here, so, as far as that goes, I know Nancy's got some more information for you guys too.
Um, so, yeah, I did contact Joe Iglee, the weed specialist at NDSU, and asked him if there's any other problems in the state, and if it has been considered a noxious weed in any other counties, and he said, "You can probably find it in every county if you looked hard enough for it, but no other county has made it a noxious weed yet." I'm not saying that we shouldn't because of that. Is it a problem? I don't think it's a problem. Um, a noxious weed is considered a weed that causes economic and, um, economic harm, and, um, I, I mean, I don't feel like this is doing that. It's very dangerous, yes, but I think what this farmer is looking for is an incentive for cost share, you know, for the weed board to be able to cost share, to be able to control it, and making it become a pro, you know, having it spread and become an issue or a problem, so I don't know if the weed board has like a policy, I don't know if you guys have like a policy or anything, but what you could maybe think about doing is creating a cautious weed list, and, you know, being able to let guys cosh, receive the cost share from that cautious weed list versus, versus making this a noxious weed just because, you know, because of that, um, yeah. It's, it's easy to control, 240 and glyphosate control it, there's another product called DuraChlor that, that easily controls it, um, yeah, and the, like, like he said, CJ said, the, the most poisonous part are the root tubers, that's where, there's a yellow oily liquid in there, and if cattle uproot the plant, or hay equipment comes and up, uproots the plant, um, that's, that's where, um, the tubers are causing the most issue, because the poison, a lot of the poison is in those tubers underneath the ground.
So it'll be toxic even in the bay of hay?
Yeah, if, if the, if, if it gets cut and those tubers are uprooted, and the cattle can eat that, they'll eat those, yes.
It hasn't caused a problem, any issues in the other place yet, huh?
We, I have not heard of any, I only started here in July, so, um-
At least for MS County, I haven't heard of anything, um, you know, you go on the internet and you can find all the horror stories you want, but, I mean, according to Minnesota's, um- But, I mean, according to Minnesota's, um, research, NDSU doesn't have a whole lot of research on this plant. Um, USDA is, uh, is the one that I read the most of. And they don't seem to feel that it's a, a real big issue. I mean, they want everybody to know about it, obviously, because, you know, I mean, you lose one, two cows, you know, a couple grand. So, but yeah, I mean, it's not a widespread issue that I can find.
And the number one thing too, in, in my opinion, is let's get somebody out there to identify it and make sure that's what it is before we make it a noxious weed.
Right.
I haven't seen pictures or anything, so I have no idea, but-
So in the case of this plant, does it, does it cluster? Like, do you find it in big groups or is it kind of-
It's bad, I mean-
It's in swampy-
Yeah.
-wet areas, kind of with cattails and stuff, um-
So you'll find like a, like a patch of it, like more than just like one or two plants?
No, I don't either, I guess.
Because that's where-
I mean, is it like Canadian tussle or something, or is it all over?
That's what, I, I guess that's kind of where it's like, does it get in the area but just takes over? Doesn't mean if it has to stick to your lower ground, I mean, you don't even pay lower ground every year. A lot of, like a year like this, there's probably a lot of that ground that's not even touched, so-
It looks like at least like-
Well, and that's the trouble too, I mean, I-
A little bit, yeah.
I have cattle, I have no idea what water hemlock would look like, gonna be a little long. So I, it's kind of, you know, sort of, I'm worse here now than I was ten minutes ago. I guess I'm a bit better off not knowing. But, yeah, I, I also, I guess-
If it's there, you'd be without it.
Yeah, and you're not gonna know about it usually, you know, and you're not gonna go out-
The question I have, I guess, is what's, um, is there something we're supposed to add on, or is this just for knowledge, or is this informational, or, uh-
I-
You guys kind of seem like more level weed board?
It is. To add it to the, uh, to the county list, it has, you know, true weed board. Um, I'm assuming the producer just talked to her and brought it to his attention and, um- Craig, we, we talked over the phone a few different times about it and, um, told him, you know, come in, build the heads in on, you know, what's going on, um, let you know where the weed board sits on it, since we meet before you guys do. Um, outside of that, yeah, like I said, I mean, my weed board knows about it, I gave them the information. I imagine they're probably gonna do their own little bit of research and then next meeting that will for sure handle how we're gonna handle it. Is what to get it on the county weed list, we actually have to, you know, do what you guys do, the, um, first, second, and all that, the, and then we have to send that information over to NDSU, then they stamp off on it and then becomes a county weed list or a weed item. Now, whether, because I-
Like, we could do the cost share on this, that it wouldn't be an issue, but I think the guy was more concerned with like his neighbors not taking care of it.
Yeah, but if you offered cost share for it, do you, maybe that would give them an incentive to go out and do something?
It might. I mean, I would hope so, because, I mean, honestly, I'd like to see a lot more producers taking care of their own stuff, but that's not always the case.
Well, if it's a wetland, you can't even spray with 240, can you?
You can. Um, Tralax is a 24D that is an aquatic safe, 24D?
Okay.
Uh, there is various forms of glyphosate that are aqua-safe as well. Um, with an aqua star as one, and I can't remember, there's a couple of them. But, yeah, there are aquatic safe chemicals that you can use to spray. I mean, you don't want, you know, just spraying into the water, but, you know, you kind of graze over it, it'd be all right. But, yeah, there are, there are chemicals out there that you can spray. This particular weed, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions for CJ or any more, or you put on the top there? CJ, you guys?
Nope, no, I said-
Thanks for coming in. There she is.
Thank you.
Alright. Well, with that, we'll move on to the next agenda here. Next item on the agenda will be the road superintendent discussion. Um, did you put that on the agenda or what's, who put it on the agenda or what's topic?
I thought the interviewing committee was gonna bring to you guys and you wouldn't have, I mean, is that not-
That's fine. I guess I was just curious who, you know, what the aim, I don't know, if it was just for an update on it, then I guess, uh-
Unless they don't have anything to offer, I don't want to-
Look for an update on interviews, or did you do interviews?
Interviews weren't good. There were five guys we interviewed.
We had a HR person from the county association come down to help assist us. With all the interviews we had, we had five candidates and the three of us came up with the same scoring for first, second, third, all the down the line, so.
So did you, or, yeah, did you guys at least let that person know they were the top candidate? Or did you, or, so what the discussion is?
Not much, yeah.
So we need to discuss pay or options or-
Well, it's supposed to be, or what they, what they did. Where are candidates?
Who are they?
Well, do you wanna-
Well, if their, if the interviewing committee isn't ready for it yet, then it probably shouldn't be discussed, you know? I thought they were gonna bring you guys today and you guys were gonna, you know, put it up.
Right, the question is, is did you guys settle on a candidate and are we gonna make an offer, or do we, I mean, no point in interviewing if we don't make an offer?
Yeah, are you guys ready to-
What are we gonna do? Yeah. Do you like Craig?
Right.
Okay. So then, did the HR director or assistant give you any kind of direction as far as-
She did. I don't know that she's talked to you anymore in regards to it. Is she gonna make the contact?
She, she's been trying to get ahold of you guys, I know.
To speak to-
On, on Friday, she asked me to send her some step and grade information and-
Which you did.
And which I did all that and-
And everyone got a letter on that, did you not? On the step and grade?
Yeah.
On the grade structure and the steps?
No, just, just interviewing.
Did you send, did you send those?
Just, just interviewing.
Oh, that'd be news to me.
And then she tried to get ahold of you guys on Friday afternoon. She was gonna talk to you guys, she was gonna, so there it sits.
Can you guys talk to her now? Who is candidate, who are the candidates?
I don't know if you guys wanna talk to her, she can kind of-
We should probably talk to her, I guess, right?
Do you wanna take the phone here? Um, where's your phone?
Tonya Wyler?
Tonya.
Tonya, Tonya?
Hello?
Hi, is this Tonya Wyler?
Yes, it is. Tonya Wheeler, yeah.
Uh, Wheeler, sorry, Tony. So this is, uh, Aaron May, I'm the chairman of the MS County Commission.
Hi, yes, hi there.
Hi, do you have a couple minutes to kind of discuss the hiring process with our road superintendent position?
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, we have you on speakerphone, we're in our meeting right now.
Okay.
It's a public meeting, just for your own awareness.
Yes, yes.
And I guess we are, I guess my own opinion of questions would be, do we have a candidate and are we prepared to make some kind of an offer and what would be your suggestion on how to go about that?
Sure. So we did conduct five interviews last week and I thought it went extremely well. Um, the candidates varied in terms of, you know, their experience with just, um, road, closer to roads and things like that. We were also looking a lot for somebody with some management experience. Um, so the, the, those two kind of name skill sets is what we were really looking close for that. Um, I thought it went very, very well. We, we have a candidate that we felt was, um, um, road to the top, you know, we narrowed it down and we do have a candidate that we felt road to the top. Um, we have not reached out to that candidate at all yet, nor have we reached out to any of them. I did speak with, um, during the interview process, I explained to each of them that it would be ideal, um, our intention, our hope was to be able to communicate with each of them what the committee's intentions were, um, and then provide a recommendation to you as a board. Um, I did not make a speech with Dan or Craig, um, before your meeting, we had exchanged an email, but I haven't been able to speak with either of them. So I'm not sure if we are, um, what, what I was trying to say, what we were working, going back and forth on was questioning, um, what sort of salary would be recommended. Um, we were hoping to really be able to provide a salary recommendation as well to you as a board. Um, I was asking Marlon, that she shared a bunch of information with me last week about your compensation plan. It sounds like you have a plan, um, in place for that department, so I was hoping to be able to kind of go off of that plan, um, number to negotiate with that, uh, selected candidate.
Okay, so then, what, what exactly do you need from us then to move forward with that or what's?
If you want me to reach out to the, um, the candidate that I, that we felt, my, my hope was that we would have been able to reach that candidate prior to your meeting today, um, and just see what sort of salary, um, uh, expectations, you know, there were, so that we have some of that legwork done for you. Um, it's timing wise, it just wasn't working out with our communications back and forth. Um, so I don't know if you want me to go ahead and reach out to that candidate, see what sort of salary recommendations or expectations, excuse me, they have. I can certainly do that. Um, and, and then if we, if I feel like if we are on the same page, if it's something that's going to work, then we could provide that recommendation to the board.
Could you get back to us yesterday?
Go ahead and ask him.
Could you get ahold of him today and get back to us yesterday, Tonya?
Yeah, I certainly can, yes.
Yeah, would you?
That's what I, that's what I was hoping to happen to you on this. So I, yeah, so I can certainly reach out and see if that, if we're on the same page. Typically, that's how I like to see this on hold, just because, you know, um, it's to talk about it in a public meeting when we aren't even sure if we're gonna be able to, if that candidate is interested in the salary that's being offered, that kind of thing. I just like to try to do some of that legwork before we bring it to your public meeting for discussions, so that we know if it's, um, even a possibility. So I can certainly do that.
This holiday weekend didn't help at all with anything?
No. It didn't.
Nobody at all.
So what kind of legwork was done on these candidates? Were they checked out, were there references, or most of work for the county, that they're looking at personnel files or any of that kind of stuff?
That has not been done yet, so typically, what I often recommend is that you, um, are, you get to the point of being, you're, you wanna offer, um, make an appointment offer and then you're gonna double check those references before you offer it's confirmed, okay? So we haven't done any sort of record checking to this point, um, but that's something that we're ready to meet the offer, uh, it's continued on a quality reference check.
It's the last time we kind of made a mistake there, we didn't follow through on all the, our legwork and this stuff, so.
Okay, yeah.
So is that, just to be clear then, Tonya, is that an expectation we should have of you, or is that something you're expecting one or several of us to do? How, how is that, how would you like that handled?
If you want me to do that, take care of that portion of it, I absolutely can, get that helpful to you, yeah.
Well, it's just something for, I guess, the proper thing to do would probably be to have you reach out to that candidate, see if they are still interested in what other details they might have, and then come back to us with that information and then we can make some kind of an offer and go forward to the next step, if that's the case, does that seem-
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
That, yeah, that sounds like a great plan. I can do that.
Okay, well, I would say, why don't we have you reach out to that candidate and get whatever information you need and then who's gonna be the contact person here, so just, we can have a phone number so they can just call instead of doing emails and-
Do you want a phone number? Do you wanna get ahold of Marlon, the auditor?
Yes, I can just reach out to Marlon again right away. I'll, I'll go ahead. I had kind of set aside this morning, thinking that this might be something I need to do, so I have time this morning to go ahead and make some phone calls and I can reach out to, is this the number that you called me from, Marlon's number?
Uh, no, what is? Okay.
Well, she can, she calls my office and they'll transfer her office.
Yeah, so Marlon's number is 254-4807, and then someone in her office can send the num, send the call up here to the commission meeting when, when that happens, so.
Yep, okay.
Okay, we'll do that.
Perfect, that's good. I will move on that and I will get it, I'll get back with you as soon as I'm able to do so.
Okay.
Thank you, Tonya.
Yeah.
Thank you. Bye.
Yeah, bye.
Okay. So I guess for the moment, that, uh, that's tabled unless somebody wants to discuss anything further with it, we can just kind of wait to hear from Tonya?
Do we need to discuss the wages at all, or not?
I would say at this point, it seems we would probably have to wait and see what, you know, what that salary expectation even is and if it's way above or if it's in our range or whatever, then I would say we probably just have to wait. No point in discussing the salary if that candidate maybe even turns the job down.
So if I could, um, Tonya's been, we've been emailing back before last year Friday, okay? She asked me, um, what Skyler was at, because you guys adopted the greatest step.
Yeah.
And she asked her where he was at and then she asked, she said, I don't know what kind of experience he had. So I grabbed his application when he applied and I provided all that information to her and then she was gonna look at the candidate they were thinking of doing, looking at his experience, and then she was gonna go according to your greatest step. I think she thought starting him out at the same as what Skyler was getting now, or maybe even bumping him up a step. So she'll probably talk to the candidate and about the salary and then when she calls back, she'll have more information, but she kind of wanted to go according to what you guys adopted last year.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, we'll just, um, we'll just wait to hear back from Tonya here and hoping that'll be within the hour, so, so, uh, so we can just move on with the agenda items. The next item on the agenda would be Commissioner Everly has a discussion for right-of-way encroachments.
Okay, yeah. The last two months, we've been talking about that right-of-way issue. And it's last time I went up to the state, sat down with them up there, I talked to Brandon Beazey and Paul, Paul Benny, he's the director there, and I brought all the information ahead with that right-of-way and they said I was doing the right thing, that this is not, it's not acceptable to be off the right-of-way. And, um, that we should take the matters into our hands and do what we have to do to get it off the right-of-way.
And you're referring to it as?
As 89th Street, but on the damageary space there.
Okay.
Then I talked to the insurance company, I, this time I didn't talk to insurance agent, I talked to the underwriters and said, no, they're aware of that too. They said, that definitely is not a good deal, it should be removed. And if they have to, they'll have Joe send them a letter or send us a letter saying what we gotta do, but they were, they're aware of it now and they, they said that's not a good deal, so. So, the guy at State said that, you know, giving permission, that doesn't supersede the law, so that doesn't really count for anything, so.
So everybody that has a fence that's not in the right-of-way should basically have it moved?
No, it's not, it's not that. You know, we're not gonna change something in somebody else. This, we're just gonna discuss this discussion piece.
I know that, but there's other issues out there.
There is other issues out there.
That's what I'm saying.
There's other issues out there and it's brought before the board or whatever, then it's gotta be dealt with, just like this one.
So the only time it's gonna be an issue is if somebody actually brings it to the board?
Basically. And being this was surveyed and that's where an encroachment was found, that's on public record now, so that's, that's on record. So if anything would happen, the taxpayers are gonna be liable for any, any of the liability on that, on that road.
Was there an email that you sent us about-
Yeah.
-the county board of commissioners deciding what, he's, or on the, what do you call that?
A variance?
A variance. Yeah, you can't, you can't get a variance on that really. I mean, like the, I said, he sent all this up to Marlon, so Marlon sent it to you. I mean, like the, I said, he sent all this up to Marla, and Marla sent it to you, that, so, but, um...
So was the, I mean, I know we discussed it before, Joe, didn't we have, I mean, what's the extent of the, wasn't there a variance from the state or some, I, I kind of confused a little bit here, I thought there was some kind of authoritative...
No, it wasn't.
...understanding here, or...
Yeah, I mean, there, so there are records going back to 2006, for sure, the county commission, uh, meeting minutes, and then Commissioner Maturi had a, he had, he had a letter from, I think it was some more engineering, I think the engineering firm, but basically, they outlined how a fence could be allowed by the commission, and then the commission apparently adopted that, but they didn't, they didn't actually issue any writing or report anything. It's just in the minutes that was basically, that it was discussed, and obviously they didn't take any action against it at that time. So that's, that's all I know of what happened in Commissioner Maturi.
Well, I actually showed them that to him, I had all that paperwork here, I showed that to him, and he said, well, that doesn't, that doesn't, all it sounds like a saying there is that, the road supervisor at that time had talked to the state, and said that, that's what they do out there, and that'd probably be okay, but he said, then they pulled it up on imagery and looked at the whole thing, and he says, well, he's got to be railroadized there. I said, well, he said he drove over, and he said, well, that's, that's not acceptable at all. But he said, we, we can't force you guys to move that fence. He said, that's, the county has to do that. He said, the state, he said, we can bring everything to you, here's all the laws, here's everything that's supposed to be, show you all the, the laws of the, and the bylaws or whatever, and you guys have to act on it. And if you don't act on it, he said, that's, that's on you guys, and if something happens there, the taxpayers are going to be liable for that. So we can't, we can't force you to move it, but it's breaking the law, so.
That email is kind of stating that, or...
Yeah. So it should be moved, removed.
Commissioner Everly is right about when he says, you know, it doesn't, there might be other encroachments out there, you know, that does, I, you know, there's some, I turned general's opinions that I've read, that basically they say the county doesn't have a duty to examine every single right-of-way, but the county would be never in process, a landlord could always put an encroachment in place. So it, it is kind of a defense to the county if they're not aware of it, but once it becomes aware, then, I mean, obviously, there's potential for liability, so.
Well, that's what he told me up there, he said, if you're not aware of it, that's, that's different. But he said, if you're aware, and you have to act on it, that's your duty, so, that's why I'm, you know, it's not against you to, it's about the law and the taxpayers of the county, that's the way it's supposed to be, and that's, yeah.
What is the danger of this, what is the danger of this post, but that's your point?
Well, like he said, it's even railroadized, that they don't share, they, they won't share all, it's easy, and they have to be engineers.
Is there a bank right beside that?
Yeah.
Pretty steep?
I don't know. How steep is it?
I don't know, Tom, did you look at it at all?
Yeah.
So you can draw your opinion.
Well, what I'm asking is, would those railroadized feet that person, a vehicle, from going all the way over, maybe save their life?
Well, I don't know, it's not, it's not like, it's a drop-off, it's not that steep.
But it's pretty steep.
But it doesn't, it doesn't, that's, that's beside the point. The law is the law, we have to abide by the law. Like the guy up there said, you guys all took an open office to defend the laws of the county, state, federal government. That's, that's what we took an oath and supposed to do, and that's what we're supposed to do. So I asked him, I said, if this ever comes to court, would it ever, the county ever win? He said, well, we're not a lawyer, but, he said, I'll tell you this, as soon as you tell the judge that, um, there was an encroachment, and you knew about it, he said, you guys lost the case right there. So he said, the law's law, it should be removed, and that's not, that's the way it's supposed to be. The only other way would be if he would sign a letter, or a contract, draw up a contract, if he assumes all liability on that fence.
If there was a guardrail put up, say with cable?
No, there isn't, no, it's after work, I mean.
Well, I think I need some more information on this, I don't know. Should we table this, do we get more information, being this just come out on what, last Thursday?
No, there's nothing come out last Thursday, I brought this over the last three months.
What you said.
So this is the third month, so you guys got to find out more information if you want.
Yeah, I mean, you borrowed up, but it's the thing, if we didn't get this information until the other day.
So what did the information tell you?
Well, I kind of agree with Commissioner Miller that I'd like to table it for a month, to look it over and have Joe examine it, that's effectively our last option.
So, so what did you examine, if you know the laws?
Well, you're talking about the liability issue.
The liability and the laws.
So basically, uh, not to interrupt you, but basically, if there was an accident there, and they could, they showed that the fence more than likely contributed to the damage or the injury, and that was a fence that the county allowed to be there, or it's within the right-of-way from a clear zone, more than likely, not, the county would assume some liability for that.
That's the way it is, but I mean, that's, that's the same with the insurance company.
But, I mean, with these liability questions, they are not black and white, though. I mean, it is, it's going to depend on the facts, which, I think, I will tell you that.
That's what the insurance company said. He said, you know, as far as liabilities, that there's a thousand different ways that, you know, because he said it doesn't, if you guys are, he said, we're breaking the law and I'm following the law, so, he said, that'd be one factor there, that, you know, they might not pay, but he said, there's a thousand different factors that could come into this play.
Have you traveled on the state highways? Have you ever done?
Yeah.
Do you take note of it and really observe what's going on in the corridor of the state highways?
Yeah.
Where, excuse me, I'm speaking, where there's a creek, or lakes, or a waterway, and they come up out of these wetland areas, and come across and go back down. And if you want spots, you could just drive west of Lenten, just take, I'm not going to rat on anybody, but I asked the state, what do you do? We grant these people a variance because there's no way they can fence down in these wetland swamps. How? And if you want to speak to the state, you can speak to some of the state employees, and I ask them, what do you do this? That's what we do. You have to.
Well, that's the state.
But I'm just speaking, Don, and I'm reading here also in encroachment exceptions, in the material that you sent, I read it last night, and you can read it yourself, I don't have to read it to you.
Yeah. I'm just telling you what they said at the state, we had a long discussion up there, they're all aware of it, we could lose our financial aid if they really wanted to.
And I did call there Friday, but nobody was there. It's a holiday.
Yeah, well.
So I did do, do, uh...
So I talked, like I said, I talked to Paul Benny, he's the director up there, and we sat down, we went through all this stuff, and he said, there's nothing in here, he said, this should all, this should be taken care of.
And I'm not above the law.
Well, that's, that's what a lot of people are saying, we think we're above the law. I mean, if this was my fence, Dan, I mean, it's just a little bit of fence. I would say, you know what, I'm going to take responsibility, I'm not going to stick the taxpayers with any kind of liability on this, I'm going to move my fence, and I'm going to do the right thing, I'm going to show, accent it, and example for the rest of the people in the county. I'm going to, that, that would be my job, that's, that's, you were elected here, so now you're a county official, so you should abide by the laws of the county, the state, and federal government. And I guess, I think this is where I would say, you know what, this is where my honesty comes in, this is my, my integrity comes in, this is where all this stuff comes in, that I think that I, I could, I would do, rather than fight this thing and just do what, do what you're supposed to do. That's advocate, I, I don't want the taxpayers to be stuck with a bill for something that, something would ever happen, that they would be liable for that. And in your case there too, if, like you said, you could, you could probably do this, have to write up a contract that you assume liability for, but you say, your, your insurance company's never going to pay for something, if something happens, that's going to come out of your pocket, or out of the land that's going to be tied to. So why, why risk and have the county liable for it? Just move it? It's not that big, it's not that far, it's not that big a deal, it'd take you half a day to do it.
Well, I think instead of jumping to assumptions on everything, I think the first thing we probably need to do is, we need to verify that this road is encroaching, and how far it's encroaching, and kind of go into detail with that, so, do we have a verification of that, like some kind of survey, or some kind of additional information?
We had a survey twice. Okay, that's where this encroachment was found, that's why it's on record, that's why I'm bringing it up, because it was surveyed twice, and, okay, here's an encroachment that we have to remedy. And if we just let it go, we're putting our taxpayers in liability. So like I had there, said, he said, you'll find out real quick, I said, I don't know what side the rest of the commission are on. He said, well, he said, ask the guy to remove his fence, if he doesn't remove it, you know which side of the law he's on. And he says, no, then ask for, to remove the fence, make a motion to remove the fence, and arrest them, take a vote on it, then you know which side the rest of them are. So, pretty simple thing.
So we have, we have verification that the fence is encroaching?
I guess I don't have that, but I, I think it was surveyed, I mean, I haven't seen surveyed.
Well, you sent them a letter a couple years ago, where it was surveyed, right? Where it was encroaching then.
So that was based off of me just being told that it was encroaching, and that our county workers had measured it, and then it was within the right-of-way at that time?
Well, we didn't have to come, we had, well, engineering.
Okay, well, it's possible I saw it, I just don't remember.
Because, I mean, I remember the survey of the Worlinger fence, and I'd be aware we were talking about, but I don't have, I don't remember specific one about this, so I would say, that would be the first thing to do, would be to have some kind of proof, whether that is a couple road guys going on measurement, making sure it's properly measured, and that is in fact encroaching, and it is encroaching. Find out if there was any reason for it to be encroached that was recorded, if there's no proof of that, and it is encroaching, then that's pretty tough to...
I actually went on measuring it myself, it was 29 to 30 feet from the fence to the center of the road, so it's encroaching, it's supposed to be 60 feet.
It's supposed to be 60, or 66, or...
60 feet, it's 60.
Well, that, there is a 60-foot right-of-way that was purchased from a previous owner.
My grandparents have an easement that was purchased from that in 1953, and a 60-foot easement, and the letter indicated was a 75-foot easement. There's a three-mile corridor, light top end, three miles west, that's at 60 feet.
Right.
So you're saying...
And if the letter indicated 75 feet, and that's the way everybody thought the right-of-way was, but it's not.
Yeah, but you got 60 feet there, but you're still within that 60 feet there and 30 feet.
Right, so the assumed right-of-way, basically, for federal aid is 75 feet, this one's kind of a special right-of-way, obviously, for some obstacles or... So, so it's at 60 feet, and you're saying the fence is somewhere in 25 to 30 yard range?
Yeah.
Is the issue also there's railroadize, instead of being, say, software?
Well, I don't think that'd be an issue at all, I mean, it's just, the encroachment should not be there, it should be removed, they said. Doesn't matter if you put a post in there or not, I mean, that'd be just like, like that fence, we have a friend, whether it was all the commissioners, or the commissioners gave him approval to put that fence up, and we had no way to do so, but we all gave him permission, like in this case, the commissioners, in Dan's case, it doesn't state in there the new commissioner gave approval, even if they would have, like the guy up there said, that doesn't mean, that's still against the law. He's supposed to have that, that's not supposed to be in that right-of-way.
So why do they grant on state highways, federal highways?
That's, that's their deal, I don't know them, I mean, this is ours, this is, this is county's.
Read encroachment exceptions down, in the material that I said. Have you read it?
Yeah.
Would you like to read it to us?
No, do you want?
No. Why don't you read it to the public?
I don't want it, you can do it.
No, you read it.
No.
Somebody should read it.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, the North Dakota DOT, and I'll be very glad to read it to you. As it states, "On railroadage that the county could permit, encroachments within the right-of-way." The North Dakota DOT suggests that the county draft a document with the state's attorney, and get signatures for all parties. The document should clarify and explain the location, conditions, and responsibilities of the parties involved. So I brought clarity, but he wouldn't read it.
So who gave clarity on all parties involved?
Well, I don't think we need to go down this, but the only, the only issue I would have with that is, it seemed to be kind of the same process we did with the Worlinger fence, and that definitely didn't rule in our favor, so I, I don't know, you know, why that's allowed in certain parts, but the other one wasn't, so I, I just, I guess my opinion, just for the sake of time and the spares of all this, there's going to have to be some kind of, some kind of proof that it's encroaching, like no offense to you, Don, but I, I mean, we're going to have to have some kind of verified proof. I, I don't know if I'm even qualified to go out and measure it, just for the simple fact that I don't understand it in part, and the only reason why I say that is because with the old highway right-of-way, we were educated quite a bit on, we thought things were encroaching, find out there's 100-foot easements on part of it, whatever, so, however, it needs to get verified properly, since it's a federal aid road that has already had some issues and...
I talked to Michael, I talked to Michael, and they, they, they...
You mean Mike Venius, or...
Yeah, Mike Venius, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you can produce the survey like we had from Worlingers that shows that it's encroaching, I think that's, I mean, that's the evidence that we would need to go forward, I'm not going to, you know, because even if I go out and measure it, what's the other question, that you and I go out and measure it, we're a foot off, where's the proper place to move it then? And that's the other question would be, not only do you have to verify where it's encroaching, but also where the exact right-of-way is to move it there, so we don't have an encroachment issue in the future, and that would be my...
Well, that's what you have to do to survey, you put it where you want it.
Well, I mean, those are the kinds of decisions that we'd probably have to make then here, if we're going to just move on from this, because it's, you know, I would just like to see it verified the way it was verified before, that way it's like an actual official piece of evidence, instead of just me going out on a windy day and measuring it, and I'm two feet off from the next guy that...
That doesn't, that doesn't matter, if you're 30 or 40 feet, I mean, it's still the right-of-way 60 feet, you can go out there and measure 35 feet, I mean, you know what I mean?
Well, I don't disagree with that, but I'm just telling you, if you're going to make it a point to make sure that it's off the right-of-way, because if it's at 59 feet on a 60-foot right-of-way, and someone would hit it down the road, we could still get sued no different, huh? So maybe you have to make sure, if that's the case you're pleading, that it gets properly placed in the exact spot, so that the liability is reduced or eliminated.
Yeah.
So I'm not qualified to do that, I'm definitely not going to take on that kind of liability, so the decision should be made, how you want to go forward with it, to verify it, unless you're okay with verifying it and telling them where to go, but then you're going to inherit that liability.
Well, he's, he's going as the fence.
Typically, we have a road superintendent handle some of those things, we don't have one right now for that, so...
Well, I'll make a motion that he removes the fence, if he's on his fence.
Commissioner Everly needs a motion to have Dan Maturi move his, remove his fence, or move it off the right-of-way?
Remove it off the right-of-way.
Remove it off the right-of-way? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Not hearing any motion, that is for lack of a second?
Okay, so is that saying you guys don't want to abide by the law?
I want more information. I want to make sure we got the proper information before we act on it.
Well, then what would be the decision of the board to get more information would be the next step? How do you want to procure that information? My suggestion would be that you get someone to survey.
That's what I would think.
I don't know how else you would do it, because anything else, you're taking on that liability responsibility yourself.
I think so, should, before we go spend a bunch of money on survey again, it will survey twice.
Well, then, we should be able to just produce that survey then, I should be able to, so that would be the other thing to do, would be to just produce that survey evidence, so that we could go forward with it. I mean, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with any of this. Chairman's not supposed to make motions or seconds, that's why I sat on that too, but But I mean, the decision needs to be made that we're gonna either, we're gonna have proof, someone's gonna have to verify it. And I'm just saying, I don't feel qualified enough to take on that responsibility. So we're either gonna have to hire dumb, well, if you believe it's hired dumb, shouldn't be hard to contact old engineering and get that survey. If they have that survey, they've produced it for us before, like with the Worlinger fence. They have a survey showing the existing fence, where the right-of-way is, that's pretty clear-cut. The next step would be to seek out if there was any evidence that the fence was allowed by somebody. If that isn't the case, then the fence is encroaching, and then you follow that process. I think that's pretty well how you have to handle it.
I think you're, you're aware, right, Dan, that it's encroaching? I mean, why don't you just, why don't you, are you, would you move the fence? If I asked you, are you gonna move the fence? Yes or no?
Well, if it's in violation of the law, that's how it boils down to it. It really doesn't matter if you want to move the fence or not, it'll get moved, like we've done the last time, so...
But I mean, just like, we, we all took a note, obviously, it was right. Why can't we just fucking do it? What that, what bothers me?
Why don't we get the proper information as well?
So who's gonna take it upon themselves to get that in? Are you gonna get that information from old, you gonna get the survey?
Sounds like those guys wanna do it, so let them do it.
You're the one that's pushing the issue, you did-
I pushed the issue, and I brought it up three months in a row, now all of a sudden you guys wanna change it and say-
We don't have the, everything in, that we feel comfortable to do it yet. You get the proper information from them, okay.
I told you, I went to the state, I did this, I went to the attorney's-
Well, the state does nothing, didn't come down and survey it, they just gave you what to do.
Yeah.
Get somebody out there to survey it, or get the information that it, where it does say it, and then we'll act on it.
So you, you went up and met with the state of the, of the gap over there, I guess?
I set up the gap, we sat down, we went through everything, and I brought in all this stuff, where all the encroachments, where encroachment was, the letter from the minutes from the, from the-
Pretty meetings?
Meetings, and was this letter for, that he said he got permission, brought that up, and they said, "That's, that's valid."
So you got all that information, but you didn't contact old about the survey?
I talked to old about the survey, it is, so, you know, he said they remember doing the survey and stuff, and that the encroachment was like seventy-five feet, it sounded, so they thought it was. And, like you said, now they got, you can have sixty feet, that's what it is there, but...
Well, he thought it was seventy-five.
Normally on, on federal aid roads, seventy-five feet. But when he double-checked, I said, "Someone," you know, they said sixty feet, said, "Yeah, there's sixty feet for a three-mile corridor there."
Okay, so I think the agreed-on, upon move is to produce the survey, and and then the other thing to do would be to verify if there was any other, any variances issued or any other thing like that, just, just for the sake of information, whether or not they're valid or not, that should be... If there aren't, then that's fine, and like you said, even Joe's basically just not to throw him under the bus, but you said that there was just some discussion in the minutes, but no official, like, document drafted, nothing, then you know, resolution or variance, or anything here on it?
I got it right here. Variance should've been reported, but, uh, yeah, they brought it up to the, to the, it was in the minutes that, and he brought in the paperwork from, from old, and it was discussed, and-
But no action was actually taken, that, that-
Not that I can see, I mean, I don't, I was in the meeting, obviously, but it, it wasn't documented. If there was actually was taken, it wasn't documented.
Okay.
I think he said up there, he said, "Just make sure it's documented." And I said, "Well, we gotta get it," he said, "That's good." That's like I said, when he said, "Well, you bring up that, if he's gonna remove the fence, if he says yes, then he knows it's with the law, if he says no, he knows it's against the law." That's what the rest of the guys do, he said, "They don't wanna fight the law, they don't fight the law."
I think you should, I think somebody should produce the survey, so we have that evidence. Because the reason I bring that up specifically is because I got a text a couple, like about a week ago, about someone having a fence line encroaching. I didn't have time to go out there, so I actually contacted the sheriff's department, had them go out and look. They looked, and they really didn't find an encroachment. And so, the reason I say that is because there needs to be some verification, instead of just action based on an accusation. So, I think the survey needs to be produced, if there is one, if there is one that's already paid for, that makes the most sense, that that's the information we should go out with. I don't, I don't think anybody's in dispute of that, so I think that should just be the end of it for now. Bring the survey, or get it, get something in paper we can look at, bring it up on the TV. Then the decision's gonna have to get made. If it's encroaching, and there's no action that allowed that fence, then it's, the law's driving it to fall? That's just the way it's gotta be, so...
I did what I did when I had for materials supporting what I did. So I did, and I set the fence accordingly, and that's where it's been sitting since nineteen ninety-six.
But it's encroaching, yeah.
I didn't say anymore, and I won't elaborate anymore.
Yeah, that's, uh-
I don't want the taxpayers to be stuck with some liability that they shouldn't have to be. That's the only reason.
Okay.
The law says this, and the taxpayers are what, taxpayers are what, if something happens, they're responsible. And I don't want that on the taxpayers.
So who's bringing the survey for it? Who's gonna do, who's gonna contact old, or the road department, or wherever the survey was submitted to? Who's gonna find it?
Off I know.
I could step up too.
Well, both you can do it, that way we make sure we get it done, so. Sounds good. Next item on the agenda will be, uh, road issues that brought up by Commissioner Miller.
Well, there's a, uh, road, it's, uh, Fifty-Sixth Street, and then Third Avenue shoots straight north of that. It's between Brad Stoppard and Bayhawks property, and it's so bad that the pasture at the north end cannot be accessed. Is that something the county can help out on, in some way, to get the last mile? The first mile isn't too bad, but the last mile is just a-
You're talking about this stretch going in new?
No, it would be that one just straight north there, it bends to the west and then straight north. Right there where your hand is.
Where it's checkered?
Yeah, where it's checkered.
The dashes, yeah.
It goes around the hillside, or it's pretty steep, that's why they went to the west and into the north. And then it goes back on a section line there where it's crazy.
Is that certified road that we normally blade and gravel? Or is it just basically on the public right-of-way?
It's on the public right-of-way, and it became, well, it used to be a house up there.
Okay.
And it used to be bladed up there, the farmstead is where it sold you up to live up there. And from that point north, it was just a section line.
Basically just a two-track trail?
Two-track trail, and it's getting pretty, uh, pretty haggard. It's deep enough that you can't really even take a pickup through there. Is that something the county could go up with the blade, level that out to the line? And put culverts in if they needed?
Well, historically, we haven't been doing that unless it's a piece of certified road, just because, you know, we're trying to maintain to the residences and the other specific spots, so...
That's a question, I guess.
So, I guess in my opinion, if nobody's living up there, and hasn't for many years, and that's the reason why the road's kind of been not maintained, I mean, I would say, I would say no, that'd be my opinion.
So just because there's no residence up there, that's what you're saying, that-
Well, I mean, it's just, it's one of the deals where, like we've discussed before, we have twelve-hundred miles of road, and we don't have enough blades to cover them the way we wanna cover them. So the only way to do it is that, the only way to get less miles per blade is the increased blades are less in the miles. So, the easiest way to lessen the miles is to start picking some of these roads that are, there's one or two landowners basically utilizing it, and that's, you know, whether or not it's for the public good or not, I mean, those are the decisions. The board can, to my knowledge, when it comes to the law and maintaining the roads, the road system is out of our discretion. We could blade any piece of road in the public right-of-way that we know of. Just whether or not you're gonna do that, if you're gonna stick to policies to try and maintain the certain road system you have. My knowledge and experience from what we've done before is, the few times we've brought it going back that hasn't been maintained for a while, old residences, where people are updating the property, they, a lot of them have tried to bring it up themselves, and then we maintain them, kind of like, uh, Bogos out there was one on that eighty-sixth and a half, or eighty-second and a half, or whatever out there, that they kinda had someone gravel it and get it back up into shape.
But they had somebody else gravel it?
Right, and then we kinda added it to the route, and now it's getting maintained. So that, it's kinda hard to justify just doing every road in the county all the way.
But you want this approved by the board, if you do?
Well, if you're gonna do something like that, I think the board has to approve it, and I think we have to go about it in a process where we agree that, like, I don't think blading two-track trails makes a lot of sense for us. I think we either need to add these roads to the road system, and they need to be properly kind of brought up, culverts, gravel, otherwise, I think we just need to leave it to the landowners and their own devices. It's public right-of-way, it's there for them, it exists, but it's not our responsibility to maintain the quality of it. We've been over that over and over, so... I don't think we can maintain the quality of a two-track trail. We either gotta bring it up to where it's dang road, or just leave it be, that's my opinion.
That's my take, I think a lot of farms are taking it upon themselves to pick up their own section lines.
Right, so really, one commissioner should not dictate to go work on a section road or something like that?
I would say not, unless you wanna pick a fight with somebody, which is kinda seems to be the route, but, you know, gone, and some of these folks, if one person asks, and we say no, then the next one we say yes, and now it's like, well, how come that one and not this one?
Exactly.
I think those decisions, there needs to be consistency on those things, and that should be, basically, the agreement, we're only gonna maintain like certified road. And what I mean by certified road is a, a, a normal type width, typical digits, a maintainable piece of road that you can blade and actually, you know, if you're gonna invest dollars and time into it, it's a road worth doing.
Basically, that has grassed out the center, two gravel strip fences, or sort of third lot up?
Well, again, like you said, some of these roads that have been abandoned essentially, where they were built up, I mean, the township built them up at that time, or maybe the county did in the thirties, forties, fifties, and someone lived back there for years, and then now they don't, and there's still ditches, and it's a maintainable type road, then that's a question of whether or not we're gonna bring that back into the system or not. I think just going out, yeah, blade it 'cause somebody asked, and then you blade it for five years, and then you didn't. Some of them are washed out, some of them aren't, you know, some of them are on hilltops, some of them need culverts. Just, there needs to be consistency with this stuff.
Oh, would you recognize this as a high-grade road that was built up off the section line? Because we had that deal up through Hyde, and we had it with what's his name, Stoppard, going along that lake that we worked on.
Well, this is right up at that lake, too, it's the same thing, so, I mean, my-
So it's principled?
I mean, my opinion is, is there just needs to be consistency on it, that's my opinion. If you're gonna do it, then it needs to be like, why are you doing it, other than just because someone asked? Is there someone living up there, is it becoming a school bus route, is it a cut across of a mail? There's gotta be some reasons-
Just for two producers, it's a lot.
Right, and then, whether or not the two producers, or your family, or your best friend should have nothing to do with it, it's more so, there's a reason the county stopped maintaining eight years ago. It didn't produce the value for what we were trying to accomplish with that. And that's why, if it's going to be that valuable of a road, it should be specific... Yeah, I don't think you gotta go and nail it down in a policy, but just a generalized like, yeah, someone's living out there, and I got two kids, okay, well, this needs to maybe get... And then, do we do all of it? Do we ask them to produce part of that? You know, hey, you, nobody asked you to move out on this road that no one's been living on for thirty years, you should have some skin in the game on it, or, again, that's why I bring up specials, because I don't think it's fair that the entire county should have to revive the road just because someone decided to move out there. That's, that's not really fair, especially when it's well-known. We've had issues maintaining our road system. It's asking a lot to just to rebuild a half-mile or a mile of road for one family or two producers. That's just, if you're gonna do it, fine, just needs to have some consistency, other than just picking winners and losers, 'cause we're in a good mood today, and next one we won't be. That's not, yeah, that's, that's a good way to go about getting everybody angry with you. Either say no to everybody, or you say yes for certain reasons, that's my opinion.
The one I got is, do you wanna pull up Township One Twenty-Nine North, or Seventy-Four West?
It's such a-
Western McIntosh County, huh?
Yep. I had reports, and I went down there and looked at it, I think a couple other commissioners looked at it, on, uh, Twenty-Second Avenue Southeast, going south, south of the highway. Yep, that one. The first mile, it's on a section road, and there were three culverts put in there. Then it turns and goes east about a quarter-mile, and goes south another mile. And there were six culverts put in there, so there were total nine culverts put in this, uh, two-and-a-quarter-mile stretch. And this was actually done this past April. And supposedly, from what I've gathered, Commissioner, everybody knew about it, nobody else on this commission that I know knew about it. And that's why I asked, how can one commissioner go ahead and say it's a right to do a project like that, when it happened here?
That was, that was done a long time ago?
No, it was done in April.
Yeah, I know, it was-
I had verification of that.
You might have looked before, every time I brought it up, at meetings and stuff, that was, when it first even got on here, Nick, when he did that road down there, and promised those guys he'd put culverts in there. When I got on the board, they were promising they were gonna put culverts in there, to go and all, try to get something done. So Nick didn't, or never did it, and Francis, I said, Francis, you know, and I brought this up at meetings before. And then Francis never got it in, and then I said something to her, our last road supervisor there, about the same thing. So he went down there and looked at it and stuff, and-
So why did you take it on your behalf? Why didn't you bring it to the board?
I did, it was brought to the board many times.
Then you were gonna, I never, I don't remember this ever being brought to the board.
Well, it was.
No.
It was back when Nick was on already, when Nick was still here, had this product.
And basically took, you know, several county employees in April, when they should've been blading the road, putting culverts in this road?
Yeah, I never told them to put culverts in, they should've never put them in at that time, they should've been blading the roads.
They should've been blading the road? I don't know, I guess. Sometimes we do things, and then next time, somebody else is, uh, yeah.
When was that road built up down?
I, I don't know, that was a long time ago.
What's a long time ago, Jim?
Well, I was on eight years or eight else before that.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Looks all the fresh to me. Who was the guy that pulled it up?
Well, Nick, the county did that.
Why would they build that up? There's a road to nowhere.
I have no idea.
There's not a soul living down there. And if I recall, based on the atlas, don't you have property down there on the end of that two-mile corridor?
No.
On the west side, your brother did a trust with your, your niece, that you farmed?
Uh, yeah, not on that, I didn't, I don't take, I don't take that or, I never use that or whatever. I go, I come out of hay and go down.
I don't take that. Come out of hay and you go down?
That has not, that has nothing to do with me, at all. Nick Lawler built that road.
Well, from what I gather, you told the road supervisor that, that you need that project done before you get off the commission?
I never said that. I said, I said, I, and I, like I said in meetings and before, this has been going on for eight years, these guys have promised culverts back in the day.
Eight years?
Eight years. I've been on there for eight years now, right, almost eight years, right? And when these guys got up, when they, when I got on, they, they said, "Nick promised us," and I talked to Nick about it, and Nick was still on time, "Yeah, we're gonna get down there, do that, we're gonna get down there, do it." I brought it up at meetings and stuff, and, "Nick, yeah, we gotta get that done, we gotta get that done." Then when Francis got on, I said, "Francis, these guys have promised these culverts to Nickless area, are you guys gonna get them in, or what?" "Yeah, whenever we get time, we'll get them in."
So, so you're saying that if people, if we promised people something four, five years ago, and they ain't done yet, we can go ahead and do it now, then?
I never said that. I'm saying that that's, if that was promised to the people at the time, that should've been done, right? That's what they were told to do, and Francis Gabriel did a lot of work in that road, he helped them all out there, and he was told that they were gonna put them culverts in there.
And you do not use that road to go down to here?
I do.
You know, I, I've been on this board for six years, I don't even know where the hell this road is, hardly, like, I don't-
Well, it first used to be-
No, I get it, I get, my point, my point is this, like, so you have a road superintendent who was only here for two years, who wasn't even a road employee prior to that, knew about this need to get done five to ten years ago, and then took it upon himself to do it in April on his own accord?
I have no idea. I mean, he went down, he talked to Francis Gabriel, and Francis went out and looked at that too, and that's, I don't know, funny, funny.
Well, because, I mean, so you spoke to Skylar about doing this stuff?
You alone?
And then so? No, I think we were here at a meeting, I said, "Are you gonna get them culverts in?"
There's nobody else that knew about this, there's nine culverts put in there.
In the April meeting, when I went back, it stated quote, Skylar gave this statement, "When are you gonna start blading the roads?" Addressed to Mr. Skylar Purwitz. He said, "As soon as I get a group of culverts placed fast," was in the minutes. We had no clue where this fast was gonna be directed to on placing these culverts that were associated. And it was brought to our attention internally, what was going on. We had no idea about this, none.
It was brought up at meetings a long time ago, and everything else, and I told Francis, I told Skylar, and Nick, that these guys have promised us, and-
Well, my issue, I'm just gonna interrupt you for a second, though. I, I got one kind of big issue, because a couple meetings ago, when we had a lot of people in the county that were pretty fired up about the roads not getting bladed, and then you kinda led the charge to say you don't know why the roads are getting bladed, when the whole time you knew that they were down there working on culverts during the prime time of this, and then you, you didn't stick up for the guy, you, you kinda threw him under the bus about how this wasn't getting done, and that wasn't getting done, and the whole time you had him working on culverts in the middle of nowhere?
I never had him working on that.
Done!
You're not done.
I never had him working on no culvert, I didn't even know when he was gonna put those culverts in.
Who would've told him? Nobody even knows that these damn culverts exist, and you didn't know nothing, you didn't, but you're the one that remembers eight years ago, it was supposed to get done? And then you let the guy do these culverts? Meanwhile, the roads were, we all were under the assumption these culverts were like on major roads and getting done, and, I mean-
Eight two-and-twenty-four-inch culverts, forty feet long.
It kinda seems to me like Skylar probably thought this was a bigger project than that was even supposed to get done, and then after he got it done, he basically, you never even acknowledged in this meeting that that might've been part of the reason the roads weren't getting bladed, is 'cause you had him putting culverts in the boonies?
I never had him putting culverts in the boonies, I never had, just told him when to put no culverts in. I didn't know where he was putting culverts in, so, I mean-
Boy, I, I don't know.
When you swing, you swing forward.
Well, I, whatever. I'm not gonna sit here whether or not it's personal and all this other shit, but all I know is.
That's not right.
The way it went down with some of the stuff with Skylar and then, and then now we're finding out later that he was trying to what? Finish up a promise that was made before any of our times and then he got thrown under the bus for that? I didn't tell him to put. But you never even said nothing. Like, oh, maybe it was because some culverts were getting done that I asked about from eight years ago. I mean, done, I've been on this board for six years with you. I've been chairman of it for three. I have no idea what you're talking about. I don't. I, I mean, you might've got brought up and done, we never voted on an action of this kind or any kind of like, I mean, this is, I don't know, this. I'll tell you what, this is the kind of stuff that really drives me nuts when these accusations get about our guys not getting work done and you find out it's because they're doing stuff and it's not even their fault. They're getting told by a commissioner that this needs to get done or that. I never told. Well, who told them? Who told you? Skylar. I told Skylar. I said, when are you guys gonna get, get these culverts in that these have promised? Which is code for.
You said you never talked to Skylar.
Yeah, but when a commissioner says, when are you gonna get that done? That's code for why isn't it done, man? I mean, you. For the last eight years, I've been asking, when are, when are you guys gonna get these culverts in? That's, that's. Right. Been going on for eight years, right? So he took it upon himself to do it. That's what he did then, I guess.
Road to nowhere.
Right, but I'm, I'm more, I'm more frustrated to the point that you never even brought that up when these people were in here is like basically accusing him of not getting anything done. I mean, and the presumption is, is that, well, yeah, he just wasn't getting it done. And he was actually just getting things done that, you know, that to me, you know, I'm an employee of this county. I had a commissioner come up and started asking me when and where and what. I mean, at some point, he decided to take it upon himself and get it done, presuming that it was an important project when really it really wasn't. It was just something you kept bringing up. And you never knew that they were doing it or never tried to stop it or.
Hey, you shouldn't do it right now.
I didn't even know.
He wouldn't have just gone there and, he just wouldn't have gone there and just did the project without somebody mentioning it.
Get the direction.
Because that took two or three employees for two to three weeks at the time when they should've been on the roads.
And then it started raining. They never got their routes bladed.
Well, they should've.
That's when the people come in and with the blame, they had legitimate reason to complain. And the attention was focused on two miles to a road to nowhere. And Donnie Everly's got an eighty setting down there on the far south end on the west side.
Yeah.
In the Alicia Everly Trust.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't take that road down.
How do you get into down? You said you'd go from Hague and you'd go south.
Yeah.
And that's the corridor. You go east to Hague on Highway eleven and on Twenty-Second Avenue, you go south. That's where you go south.
Down Hunter Street and they go all the way over.
How can you sit there and lie?
Well, whether or not that was done for that reason or not, the problem I have is that you, you let Skylar sit in here and ride the light.
And burn it out.
And you never even brought up one said, hey, this might've been part of the reason why that happened. You never. I had no idea when he did those culverts. I guess I didn't know when he did those culverts.
Who, who even paid for it? The county ended up paying for the culverts and everything then?
And the labor to build up that road, it really died to nowhere. They would by just as well take it on this road to the north. The day mob came in and let Craig Miller do it and say, hey, fill that road up and just do it. And pull all the blades up.
To do it building that road. That road was built up years ago, way before.
For what reason?
I have no idea. It wasn't, it was my decision at the time to build that road up. You think that was my decision to have him build that road up?
Does that offset even deed it or how was that? Or was that just an established trail?
Where's home? There's always that goes quarter mile ways.
Those down there are shoemarkers. Shoemarkers down there. Maybe they did it at the time. I have no idea. All I know is they were promised culverts in there. And I just, I asked them when, if they're gonna put those culverts in there because they were promised. And that's the only thing that, you know, that I have brought up.
And Skylar's burned sick there in the general public.
Yeah, I mean, the, the part that drives me nuts is that when people were saying he's mismanaging his time and everything. And it sounds to me like commissioners are going through and mismanaging his time. And he was just trying to do his job and. I don't, I don't know. When you have a bunch of commissioners that don't have a clue about a project except you, and then you wanna sit here and act like you had nothing to do with it, then it's pretty hard to believe, though. I just, I believe what I want to believe, what's happening. I don't know that.
Skylar got thrown under the bus. I kinda feel bad for him now.
And I go to the public.
All right, well, all right.
And make note.
Let's move on before that. Are there any other road issues?
No.
No.
I do, I, I had one to bring forward.
There could be more out there that wouldn't even.
We don't even know them.
Well, I got another culvert to bring forward, but this is actually on a piece of road we maintain. Um, so it would be First Avenue, it'd be right next to Albert Weber's farm, First Avenue and Seventy-Fourth?
Is that the one that goes west?
It goes right by, like where Bryce built his house and Weber's, their main farm operation there. But they, Seventy-Fourth and First?
That's where Weber's.
Okay, that is, all right, there it is. So it's Center Avenue, not First. That's not, okay. So right at the intersection there of Center Avenue and Seventy-Fourth. We had a pretty big rain out there a couple of weeks ago. And I know Justin and a couple of guys have been fixing a lot of washouts. I've been getting called. I know Dwayne Olhouser, he called you down. Well, Brady Weber had called me too and he said that there should be a culvert put in that intersection. I just got one picture sent to me so I don't, I didn't get out there and take a look at it. And I kinda felt like it's probably something that should maybe wait till we have a road superintendent, but it should get at least brought forward and talked about. But somewhere in there on that intersection, when it rains really hard, the ditch is either really flat, sloped the wrong way, something's the issue. I think that's the spot. And that water will run over the road, but instead of actually going into the ditch, the way that road and the elevations and everything, it actually runs down the road a little bit. And it'll kind of wear a groove into the road. Even if there isn't a wind, even if the wind was on the other side, it's just the way, the way it's shaped, it runs on the road for a few hundred feet till it gets its way back to the ditch when it over tops the road. But there, I don't believe there is a culvert in that road. I'm pretty sure there isn't one. If there is, it's smashed, plugged or undersized, whatever. But Brady was basically requesting a culvert there at some point. So that's just something that should get kind of.
Aggressed.
Yes, and you know, that's something for a road superintendent to go out and, you know, once we have one, probably address it. I mean, Brady, it wasn't only burning rush has to get done tomorrow thing, but he wanted to show it to me while there was water in the ditch, just to show how it acts. And it kinda runs to the west on that road for a bit and then it gets into the ditch. So um, just another thing, just to kinda have in the minutes on the record, when we could get a superintendent in here, somebody that wants to tackle that or address it, that should get put on the list, so.
There's another deal before I get on road issues. Darris stopped at my place on the way back on a Monday evening and dropped off a map and some literature that he had gotten from, was it Old Engineering?
Caterham's Liam Jackson.
Okay, on that road by Cattail Bay.
As far as?
Well, as far as what they put together, Caterham's Liam Jackson, as far as building a road in, to the south of that two-mile stretch.
Okay.
And they had a proposed bid, didn't they, on that engineering side?
Yes, it was, it's actually a straight in from the highway.
That made.
Compared with the gravel road, you know, potato people.
So it goes just in those two miles or all the way to the dock?
No, it goes out, it goes all in, it goes all into the dock.
Straight shot.
It'd be a three-mile stretch.
Oh, you're talking about coming off the highway and going straight in, like a mile or two south and going and just.
Straight in.
Okay.
And I didn't really know it until Darris brought it up and Caterbin brought it up. Jody or Jo, what's his name? Jody?
Yeah.
That was a.
And I got it in my pickup, Darris. I'll bring it in and give it to him, okay? He asked me to get it to him.
Yeah?
You, you, you talked about, you, you went to an engineer on that, on that road, on the main road.
Yeah.
I think he'd be very interested to see him, the numbers on the road going straight in.
Yeah, I didn't even know a proposal like that existed, so I.
It was back in two thousand nine or two thousand ten.
Cause yeah, I mean, the only presumption I would just have is if, if there's proper right of way or if you'd have to.
Well, perhaps, Rob Byerson owned the land at that time.
Mm-hmm.
And he signed off on, he would donate the land.
Oh.
And, and, uh, four Rudy siblings would sign off on that section line going rest of the way.
It's just something to look at. And Darris brought it out and I appreciate it.
Heck, yeah. Whatever. I didn't, I didn't know it existed, so.
I think it would save money.
Well.
You're trying to waste this road. Well, it's straight, straight in from the highway, straight in Cattail.
Straight in, Gary would go right off and it's a straightaway road coming from Stradler down that peacemaker. It goes straight in. It's a straight shot to the dock.
Yes. It's three miles rather than five and a quarter or whatever it was.
And you take a lot of pressure off from the Potato Boys hauling in and out.
Yes.
And I think maybe we, maybe, maybe you can get federal money going into Blacktop that on a recreation corner.
Well, if you gotta plan together, that's your best chance. If you can submit something that's legitimate, that's, you know, that's gonna be your best chance at securing any funding for any program. So that's usually the first step. That's why I reached out. But if there's some kind of proposal like that, I'm.
All for.
Yeah.
There's other information in that. I'm, I'm out, but yeah, you should, you should look out.
Okay.
And these guys, if any one of you can, as you've been talking on roads, if anybody wants to talk in reference to that Cattail Bay road that was taken care of, any one of you guys can express it or if you want me to say anything about it, I certainly will.
I talked to Ron DeKelsch and, uh, you all know she works for the government. She said she knows a lot of different ways of getting money for roads. If you guys wanna talk to her about that, she said she'd definitely help you. Federal money.
And Voices of Law, he wants to talk to you guys too about that. They're looking at a guy for, uh, that city byway. Cause of Winona Island. So Tom Koeppmann, Dave Piaz, whenever you guys would like to speak to them, they'd be more interested in coming in and talking to you guys. Cause they're trying to work on that right now with the guy through Valley City.
Any information is appreciated, like I said. Well, I mean, whatever.
Bring it to them, yeah. Bring it in, guys, yeah.
For sure.
I'd just like to thank the boys that did the work out there on the road. They did a much job and both done quick and.
Hang on a second. I'm wondering if this is Tonya?
Here's Tonya.
Hello?
Hello, this is Tonya Wheeler calling in. Do you guys have time to discuss right now or am I catching you in the middle of other discussions?
No.
Absolutely.
It is. Go for it.
Okay. Okay, so I was able to make some phone calls and connect, um, the, I'll just get kind of cut to the chase essentially. The candidate that the committee would be recommending to you as a commission for hire would be Russell Waller. Um, he is a candidate that seems to really have the best, um, combined background of, um, equipment operator experience and management experience and just overall, and he, um, he's a candidate that wrote this up. Um, I did get to speak with Russ. He is very interested in this position. Um, and he knows that I would be recommending, um, his name to you as a commission this morning. Um, I did take time really quickly to contact references so that, um, that portion of it could be discussed, I guess. Um, shockingly, I actually was able to reach all the references on here. That's never happened. I never reach references in a timely manner, it seems. Um, but I was able to speak to three different individuals and I received three very positive references. Um, they are individuals that, um, have worked with Russ in some capacities over, over the years. So other highway superintendents and a previous supervisor as well. Um, I will say that I, I always think it's positive if you have previous supervisors on reference lists as well. Um, it's not, you know, just a, a personal reference. It's not like I just write, it's somebody who actually supervised. And that was one of these references as well. And they were all very positive. So, um, overall, I think, uh, the committee can strongly recommend Russ Waller to you as a commission as a candidate for your road supervisor.
Did you, uh, as far as like a, a paid?
Compensation?
Yeah, I mean, did you reach something that, you know, or I don't know, I mean, how do you wanna go bubble? Do you wanna say it right now or?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we could talk about that. So I was really transparent with Russ and I shared with him, um, I, I don't, I don't know or necessarily claim to understand even the compensation structure that you have placed. Like I said, um, I did get some information from Marla's and I have seen a lot of questions over that before. Um, but I don't know the history, of course, of it. So I did look at where your previous road superintendent was placed and I shared that amount with Russ. Um, he, he's very interested in perhaps negotiating with the commission, um, for the long term that there isn't a big difference, um, between your foreman and the road superintendent. And I can confirm that to be true. There isn't a very big gap.
Yeah.
And I don't know, again, the history at all between, you know, like how these individuals were placed. Um, but it looks to me like there, there is a pretty small gap between that foreman and the road superintendent position. We've taken into consideration that the foreman does three people overtime and the superintendent does not. Um, it's looking like the foreman makes more than the superintendent. And of course, this is not anything to do with the people in the positions, just from a strict, you know, standpoint of, um, does it, is it logical? Does it make sense? Um, you're typically gonna want a major gap between those levels of supervision because there's quite a bit more responsibility placed on that superintendent position. Um, I looked right now with the information that I was hand-received from Marla's. It looks like right now, if you were to pay at the same rate, um, that was previously funded for this highway superintendent position and you factor in the overtime that the foreman, um, is eligible for, you know, that they receive, they are already on track to make more money and were, you know, need a little more compensation here. So, um, they're on track at this point in time of what's been paid out to make like over a thousand dollars more already. So that is something that I think is worth discussing and perhaps negotiating. I don't know the history, which didn't seem like planned at all. But I, but I think that, um, basically Russ just said he would be definitely interested in discussing with you as a commission further and, but that was his concern.
Sure. Well, just, just to give you a brief kind of understanding of it, just because you're working with us, so we, we kind of adopted, we did, we adopted kind of a grade and step program similar to Burley County's. Because we, we were working with Pam Binder from Burley County. And so that's, that's kind of a system. Nobody here is really an expert at it because we've really only had it for probably a little over a year, maybe two years at the most since we started it. So, um, the main issue with the foreman and the superintendent being so close is the foreman is a longtime county employee who's, you know, been there for a long time. And our superintendent currently at that rate had only been here for about two years or a little more. So
Sure.
there probably was going to be a gap created at some point just because, you know, as the experience. So it, that was more probably a situational thing more than, you know, trying to pay the foreman the same as the superintendent. So that doesn't mean it can't be fixed or changed, but that, that's probably the reason more than anything is we were, uh, compensating a longtime employee, you know, who's been here, gosh, guard twenty-five years. Yeah, versus a superintendent who was, you know, relatively new. So that was probably the main reason.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay.
When you guys interviewed, did you know that Russ worked here before?
We did. It was on his application, yes. And so that was discussed briefly. I did ask, because of course I don't, um, well, everybody is, you know, um, new to me, right? Everybody's strangers. I don't know anybody. So I did ask the question why he left to tell me the first time. And, um, he just indicated it wasn't really a great time for him for personal reasons. He decided to pursue, um, his own personal business at that time.
Well, I think at that time it was, we had, that road supervisor job was open before. And he applied and we did not offer to anybody at the time. And he got mad and quit. And then he threatened one of the guys out in the shop. Um, and that's on record. I was just wondering if you were, if you were aware of that?
I was aware of the letter that was placed in his file, um, and, cause I did, I did, um, request copies of anything that was in his files or Marla's shared information, anything that was in the files. And so, um, I am aware that there were some words exchanged. Um, I guess, I, to me, it's, it's, um, um, when I, if I see something I got as a NCR representative, I always kind of say, well, where's the rest of the story? You know, because it seemed like there was more to the story. So I think if that's a concern for you as a commission at this time, I think it's okay to discuss that and to raise, you know, visits about that. If that was, um, you know, if that was. If he was really angry at that time, um, I guess I can't necessarily say that that's enough for me to say, oh, I don't think you need to offer that job right now. Um, you know, to him right now, I think that, um, and I did, in full disclosure, asked him about it as well. And, um, I, so I think he'd be willing to do that visit with you as a commission about that if you, uh, felt like you needed to take it up further. Um, I, overall, to be honest, I just felt like he interviewed extremely well and really rose to the top in terms of, um, the candidate that seems like he's really wanting to be the best fit for you. Um, one question that really, really sticks out to me is that we did ask the, the candidates the question, um, you know, how, if you were offered the position, how has you been in the first six months to unfold? And that's a big question, right? That's a, that's kind of a loaded question for anybody because, um, And that's a big question, right, that's a, that's kind of a loaded question for anybody, because, um, the first six months of any job is very, very overwhelming. And you're, you know, a full-on learning mode, and Russ just had an excellent response to that question, and he really, really clearly had thought a lot about the steps that he would take to, um, you know, familiarize himself with each individual in the department, the needs of the department, the needs of all the roads across the county. He had a very specific response to that question, and it really, um, kind of for me, solidified my, the thought that, you know, he just really is, is going to be a good fit for you, so. Um, I, I understand there was perhaps, um, something previously when he left, you know, maybe, um, some ill feelings in some way, day performance. And it's worth asking him about, certainly, um, but personally, for me, it doesn't necessarily change my recommendation at this time, I guess, after visiting with him and, and, um, just seeing him in the interview process, so. It's a fair question, very fair question.
Who was the second, who got second place?
Um, I don't have any of the scores in front of me, so I can't, um, I can't answer that right now, and I don't, I don't necessarily, you know, it's.
You probably shouldn't, so.
We really don't want that.
It's fine, okay, so I, I guess to just in summary then, Tanya, first of all, thank you for helping us.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, so basically, we have a candidate, we've offered the job, and that candidate has conditionally accepted, depending on a couple different scenarios, or, I'm just trying to move forward here, I guess, more than anything, Tanya, so.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, I, I understand.
And the pay.
So what I communicated, yeah, what I communicated to this, to this candidate is that you as the commission are the ones who would formally offer the job. So, and that it would be conditioned upon, based upon, it's not factory references, right? Um, so, uh, I, he is very interested in receiving a formal offer from you as a commission, if you wish, we could return, and turn around and do that, make a formal offer, and begin a negotiating process on your behalf, I certainly can. I didn't do that yet, I, I communicated to him that he is the candidate that's being recommended, and that his salary is, you know, looking, looking at full-time salary, or already top full salary, or his expectations for salary, so he just simply said he would be definitely interested in negotiating with you, um, but his concerns is that there's perhaps not a big enough gap with what's, what's currently present in. So, I don't know where we're at right now, if you want me to, um, visit with him further and make a formal offer on behalf of the commission, I certainly can do that. And then, um, it's logical that he may want sometime, um, you know, to redo that, or to negotiate however.
Well, I guess I, I think for the most part, it should just get discussed right now, and then, I don't know if you want, if you want Tanya to stay on the line, or if we just notify her afterwards, because, I mean, if we're going to make an offer to someone, it really doesn't matter if it's an hour or two from now or whatever, we can just, you know, for Tanya's sake, so she doesn't have to stay on the phone, we can, we can discuss it and do whatever we're going to do, and then let Tanya know what that decision is, and she can.
Would you be available, Tanya, today?
Yeah, yeah, I have some availability still today, so if you want me to, um, make the offer for you, is that what you're meaning it?
Well, I think what we'll do is we'll discuss it, and then we'll contact you with whatever the discussion is, and then you can go from there, and, uh, we'll, just for the sake of your time, you don't have to sit on the phone here in case it's ten, twenty minutes discussion or something, so.
So what are your?
Yeah, that's just fine.
Hang on, Don's got a question.
What are your feelings on his personal business he has on the side?
Um, so I asked about that quite a bit, actually, um, so I have been through a lot of situations where, um, you know, we have somebody who does business on the side, and then enters into a job for a county or city or whatever, and it can get kind of money, to be really honest. And I was kind of transparent about that in interview process with him, because I don't want you guys to be in that situation. Um, he has no, my understanding is that he would have no intention of, um, continuing to, uh, try to do that job on the side. Perhaps there, he's going to face out, you know, for the next six months, just get, get things off of his plate, um, but this job, first, and it's absolutely first and foremost in terms of priority. And once six or so months pass, and he, it looks like, yes, this is going to be a long-term fit for me, and it's going to be a good, um, you know, a good fit, and if we know that everybody agrees that it's a good fit, he would start selling off of his, off his equipment, which is obviously, like, we have no control over that, right, as a county, you have no, um, he could just keep it if he wanted to, but it didn't sound like he would have an intention of holding on to any of that equipment or continuing to do that for his long term, that sounds like, that was what he communicated about.
That's what you like, right?
Good, are there any other questions for Tanya? Okay, Tanya, well, we're going to discuss this, and then whatever action comes forward, we'll probably have Marla reach out to you or something and give you the details.
Yeah, absolutely, that sounds good, I will be waiting to hear from you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Tanya.
I mean, I'll thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Yep, bye.
Okay, so we have the information, so, discussion, motions.
Yeah, I think he should be making at least five thousand more than four.
Okay, well, the only thing that I would step in on here is just that, that was the reason we created the grades and steps, was that, so we're not shooting in the dark on values, we should, we should try and follow some kind of strategic.
Whether we're comparing.
Right, but are we comparing that against other department heads, are we, I mean, that's the only thing, just so. We went through a lot of work to create that system, I don't want to just throw it away first, first time you're going to use it, so.
Sorry, it's so small.
But it doesn't say, it just has the hourly wage, I don't know.
No, on top.
No, no.
Oh, right, down here, down here. Oh, here.
Yeah. Three, ten, different ones.
So you should just pick a step, you know, because he's, Pam put him in that grade ten, so you should just pick a step, so we stay consistent.
I think he should be at step four.
Well, do we have a comparison against where some of the other department heads are and things like that?
Um, I gave that all to Tanya and, um, or Tanya on Friday. She wants to know where the salaries are for the road department guy, and where the department has here.
He'll get that fifth, fourth percent.
That's up to you guys.
And do you have a number as far as what it consists of for a total on the benefit package per year and per month?
Um, I don't.
Along with the wages?
I don't.
Is there any way we can pin that or no?
Okay, so like, you know, I hate to discuss things with a single father to your family, but you're not supposed to.
Yeah, yeah, then don't, you don't have.
You don't want to discuss.
Okay, yeah.
And really, when you're looking at the salary, you shouldn't really take into consideration that benefit, I don't think you should, I think you should look at.
Well, the benefit package is offered across the board to everybody, so that's where, I mean, my main concern is just not that we have department heads that are scattering again, that was the whole point with creating our grade and step. And we're trying to bring the departments and the employees and everybody within, I don't want to say fair, because that's not fair, but reasonable, we don't, we don't want one department head making thirty percent less than the other one unless there's a darn good reason and it's supported by a decision, that's why, it's the only reason I say, like, don't just sort of pick out a number that you think is right, because that's what we were trying to avoid, right, was, well, he's making fifty-five, let's bump him to seventy, well, why, what's, is that what other guys are getting paid, is that what the, you know, the assumed overtime equates to, like, I mean, that's.
But then, when, but then when the grade was established, it was based off of your duties too that you have. You know, like the sheriff, you know, his duties, compared to like the auditor's duties and the road superintendent duty, you know what I'm saying?
Exactly, and that's where my point is, is you kind of, in, in my opinion, the closest thing to the road department has always kind of been sheriff's department. They kind of have random overtime, natural disaster, needs-based schedules, where a lot of the other ones have consistency. And I'm not saying he has to get paid the same, where I'm just using it as an example of when you're going to start comparing salaries and wages, you want to just make sure you're doing it from a place of consistency. If you want to give X above someone else, that can be fine, but there better be your, you better do it from a place of just, well, I think that's right, because it's not helpful. That was the whole point of creating the system.
I did create, and I would brought aware something that I was never aware of, that if a superintendent ends up in the equipment, and runs the equipment for X number of hours, that they're entitled to an hourly wage versus salary. Have you ever heard that, you guys as city commissioners?
No.
My assumption was there was two types of pay, there was exempt and non-exempt, you either get overtime or you don't, so if there was.
Yeah, you don't get a.
I, I, I do know, there were times.
I never.
No, you.
There's acceptable practices like comp time for certain things, and you know, that's kind of on a county-by-county basis, or.
And you make a monthly discretion.
Right, I.
Yeah, when you make a monthly salary, you add.
So, I mean, if that's the kind of process that's going to happen, then as long as it's spelled out and it's agreed upon, you know, so we're all on the same page, so.
It was based on if they did more manual labor than supervisory labor, or labor.
But that's going to have to get properly tracked, because I mean, they're going to have to, you know, they're in a blade that day, they're going to have to like clock in, like they're in a blade versus doing, just so that way there's some, because you can't just have somebody come in and go, well, I've been in the blade the last two weeks, you know, well, was it an hour a day for two weeks, or were you literally running the blade for two weeks, it's, it's hard to say. Every superintendent I've had since I've been a county commissioner, at some point, has gotten equipped.
Well, yeah.
I mean, that's just, so, if that's how it's going to be, that's fine, if you're going to start paying differently, that's fine, it just needs to be, there needs to be some accepted practices on how it's going to go about. So, those are all things that can get nailed down and agreed upon or whatever, but it needs to be, it's got to be legitimate, not just someone coming in and, and, you know, using it as a, I was going to donate it till I was mad, now I'm paying for it, because that's always come up a few times too, so.
And as long as we're on roads, I want to thank you guys out in that cattail bay area, what you guys did, Dennis, especially you sitting there in Schlosser, appreciate it. Rudy isn't here, appreciate you guys.
Go ahead with the road project, I mean, you started, done?
Do what?
Your other road project you started?
Yeah.
Is that done?
Just put the gravel over it, get some touch up, you know, and then we gotta, uh, just pull in the trees, you know, take care of that, lay the hauler.
And here's the thing that Dennis brought to my attention, I drove out there yesterday, you see how things are going, because Darius or Wanger told that they were out there working. So I took it upon my own and drove out there, and Dennis said that Vandevors, maybe Mark, asked, being we took these tree stumps and trees over to the Vandevors pit, if we would just dig them a hole to bury these stumps, being we have the excavator out there to dispose, because they won't burn.
It'd be a lot.
If that would be okay, but I tried.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's been pretty common practice over the years, if they're going to give us a place to dump something or do something, I mean, digging a hole to do it as a trade for it, I don't.
No problem.
I don't really see a problem other than just as long as we, you know, do things like make a one call, and maybe hit the phone line or something like that, make sure that's taken care of, but, I mean, if they're going to give us a place a half mile to haul some trees.
And it's pretty close to, uh, my place, it is pretty close, it's only not a lake anymore.
Right. So.
It was two miles, didn't it?
I mean, as long as it's.
It was a plus, they hauled off, you know, off-site.
And the county hauled something there prior.
Sure.
Did they? Okay, oh yeah, but they hauled some off that cattail bay road, and they dumped those off, up and out of there.
Yeah, yeah. That's odd, he just asked, I have trees burned, and he's got a hole.
Yeah, they won't burn.
Sure.
Right.
Okay, well, back on the discussion of whether it's a burn down.
It's been asked around the road.
Yeah.
Are they still hauling gravel? I know Aaron News and Don, and Don Marsden, and the bus trucks, there's possibly a bad against it.
Well, we don't have contractors hauling gravel anymore, but the county is still, you know, we got our two trucks, and then like we discussed before, if we were going to bring on some other guys, if, if people have come forward and want to get hired out, you know, we can, you know, possibly bring on more, I haven't heard of any, so, but. So, yeah, I mean, the county is still hauling gravel, we're just down to two trucks, basically, so.
Well, I was just wondering, is it charges for down there as far as getting things done down there?
Well, I mean, I would say right now, your best bet is probably going to either be John or Gar, or contacting the blade man in that area. Depends on if they're hauling gravel, usually they coordinate with a bleak guy in that area, so.
I reached out to Gar and let him take care of the city, do it.
Good, well, then if that's the case, then Gar's kind of.
Take care of what?
Just take care of the day-to-day issues that are out at the county shop, being there's no superintendent as of today.
So you can contact Gar if you want, he can let you know, so. All right, road superintendent. We making an offer, what are we making an offer at?
I don't know, I guess.
What's he expected to?
Offer to John, to Russ, and go at least step four there, seventy-eight or whatever.
And after six months, they get what, off probation, they get ratings or nothing? Or do they not, or how, what's your, what has been your pattern here?
Well, Skylar was hired before the step program, so what we did is we just came up with a rate, and then we negotiated, and then after that, then we basically just negotiated a raise, I don't even remember what it was, I mean, it's usually just a small, it's a couple percent of it.
Yeah.
Normally, what we do is like in the sheriff's office, in like my office, we have a grade and step, we will offer somebody the position at either a five percent or a ten percent less, depends, I would feel, every department's got it different.
Sure.
Once they've gone through their six-month probation, we're satisfied, they will bring them up to what that step is, is what we were going.
So you hire them at a step, and then you give them a reduction on probation, essentially.
Yes, right, Gary, that's what you do, correct?
Yeah, in the past with the sheriff's offices, we have a one-year probation period, six months is not long enough to really assess someone with different things. Uh, there is a five percent reduction of their base salary for the first six months. At the end of a six-month positive review, then they go to a hundred percent base scale.
Hundred percent, okay.
Keep in mind too, the grade step that you're looking at is, there is no grade step for the rest of the county, only the road department has a grade and step increase. This is something that we tried to get passed last year, it didn't go, so I don't think it's good that we have two separate grade and pay scales in the county, I think we need to have one, I think any HR person will tell you that too, if you start having separate grade and pace steps, you're going to have a problem. Okay? If you have a grade and step for one department, is every department going to have a separate grade and step, you should have one for the county. And that's something that we need to work on, and I know that we have a, a working committee on that end of this month, or next week or something like that, to talk about that, but. So keep in mind, what you're looking at is not conducive to the entire county, okay?
But this is adopted for the road department, though.
Right.
So what was Skylar at?
Seventy-five.
I think, or was it a?
He was at seventy-five.
Two, right.
Well, I think it was step two, grade ten, step two.
Grade ten, step two.
Yeah, he was at seventy-five, seven.
Okay.
Right, so for that grade and step, one of the things, and again, this will just go repeat what was said previously with Pam Binder when she was the extra. What determines your grade is what, is your classification, what is your authority, what is your, your job description, uh, uh, all those factors come into it, okay? What determines your step is going to be, what kind of experience do you bring to the table, okay? How much longevity do you have in the county, maybe every five years, you're entitled to a step increase, things like that, so there's, that's the difference in a grade and a step.
I just, I just think there should be a, at least a five thousand gap between the foreman and stuff, because of the overtime, that's what I'm.
Responsibility.
Responsibility.
No doubt.
You know, the overtime, if they don't get paid overtime, I've been in that position before, and you, you put in way more hours than what the rest of them do, and you don't get compensated for it, so.
You're the one that takes the heat.
Oh, exactly, yeah, that's why I think there should be a bigger gap. I think for starting out, it'd be okay for them to start out to find out what they're. No, you move it up right away, it's easier to take care of it right away when you hire them.
I feel I should be at, just speaking with Tanya, that it should be in that four to five step deal, bringing him in with the experience these people have. It's not bringing an eighteen-year-old kid in that has no experience, he knows the meaning of what a machine is, but he doesn't have any experience on doing any of it. And the size of this county and the responsibility, and the, I don't even want to say it, the deterioration of the county infrastructure, this isn't going to happen overnight to bring this all up to grade one and grade eight, it isn't going to happen overnight. And we got to focus on what's important. I think it should be a grade four or five, bringing the guy on board, bring it to his attention what the benefit package consists of, confidentiality, confidential with him, because it's an individual and a family plan, and go from there and see if he'll accept it, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'll make, by that, I'll make a motion to hire Russ at step four.
So we have a motion by Commissioner. So we have a motion by Commissioner Home to offer Russ Lawler the position of road superintendent. Had a grade ten, step four on this road superintendent, or this road department grade and step sheet, which comes out to, if you said a step four, it's seventy-eight thousand, seventy-three dollars.
Yeah.
Is there a probation period? I'm just, I'm just asking so I don't.
What did you have prior, six months?
So the policy's always been six months.
Yeah, six months.
With a six-month probationary period and then pay will be reviewed upon that probation period?
Yeah. And do you give any kind of an indication on a percentage basis of that six-month period prior or not?
I think the proper thing to do in this case would be to accept this motion and get a second on it and then discuss how we're gonna do anything different because that's, this is kind of the meat and potatoes of the motion, so.
We're all second years motion.
So Commissioner Miller seconds the motion to hire Russ Lawler at a grade ten, step four on this road department sheet, which comes out to seventy-eight thousand, seventy-three dollars and zero cents with a six-month probationary period. This motion is seconded, now we're in discussion. I would say my opinion is, is if you're going to hire based on a grade and step, then do that like they suggested and then just do a reduction to that. You're gonna do ten percent less until you meet separationary period and then there's that increase to that grade and step. I don't think you wanna increase above that step, so I would say you do that, reduce down from it. Give them that full grade and step once they pass their probationary period. That makes a little sense to me, it's consistent, it's a number you know you're going towards. So we wanna do five percent, ten percent, twenty percent, whatever you wanna do. But I think you should stick to that base number and then reduce out of it for probationary rate.
Ten percent would be down to seventy thousand, two sixty-six.
Well, I mean, my opinion, five percent is a pretty normal like cola. So if you're gonna reduce it, maybe reduce it five percent, then essentially you're getting a five percent raise after probation. Ten percent's kind of steep.
It's pretty steep, yeah.
I mean, cause you're also looking at, would you give someone a ten percent raise? That's a big raise, so you probably wanna stay in a small portion.
Right.
So.
I guess my opinion, I guess I was wondering why.
We're in discussion, so go ahead, yes?
Why, uh, you know, he quit that last job because he, or he quit because he didn't get the job last time. Got mad, stormed out, threatened one of the guys, I mean, do we really want somebody like that? I mean, I, I think Russ is a good worker, but as far as manager, I'm not sure about that after that time that happened.
We didn't know about Skylar either, and why he got the probation period.
Well, I think for the sake of transparency in that discussion, this letter is dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. To whom it may concern, on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, Russ Lawler came into the shop at seven fifty-five AM. He looked directly at me and said, "Someone's going to get it when I find out who." I asked him in quotes, "Get what?", and he said, "You know what I mean." Then he said, "Someone was telling Magrum, indicating Commissioner Magrum, lies about him." Then he set his phone down and timed sheets and left. And that was signed by one of the road department employees. I guess I really don't understand why I got named individually on that, other than the fact that I did talk to Russ after the interview process and then just told him some of my concerns and I don't. Why I got named in this letter, why I'm the only issue again stems to an ongoing problem of I'm the only one to blame for everything and I don't know why, so there were five of us that interviewed that day. I'm indicated in the letter for some reason, but.
I just saw this, I just saw this demeanor at that time after he didn't, he didn't offer the job to anybody, that he just gets so mad and stormed out. I thought that's, that's the kind of leadership is that showing? Now he's supposed to leave everybody else out there? Just my opinion is, I just don't think that's the right candidate.
Jan and I were chosen to select him. We had five candidates to select from. He did the best. And we had an HR person from out of the area that didn't do ability and she agreed.
Were you aware of it? He applied for this job last time, then he got mad, couldn't, because he didn't get the job. Were you aware of that, were you aware of this letter at that time?
In the letter, yeah. But what's the word?
Is there, there's really a story to provoke people? My God.
Well, he got, he got.
At least he was.
He got, go from another job for the same reason, because it's temperament. So I'm just saying, my opinion is, I don't know, at least I candidate for the job.
Well, it's, it's a valid concern, the only reason I bring that up is I, I didn't know about this letter till this morning. I didn't know, I didn't know it existed, I, I, I had heard there were some words exchanged back then. I, I didn't know it was anything actually put in the record, I just assumed it was someone blowing off speed steam. But the, the concern that I have just with this letter is that it's been such a big issue with the previous road superintendent about this letter, this letter, this letter, we didn't know about it. We, this letter, basically it solidifies that he's unqualified and now we have a candidate with a letter just like this. And I don't disagree with you. Maybe it's vengeance, maybe it doesn't mean anything. But we don't know that was Skylar's letter either, but yet that got brought up as like rock solid evidence of his lack of qualifications. And so it, it just does concern me because there's lots of citizens in the county that were extremely concerned about this background of this letter. Now we have a candidate with the same issue, this is.
That's okay, and you guys, I mean, if you could go through the other guys' personnel file and find out, there's other, maybe other infractions in there.
We didn't go through any of that until this morning, but we had chose with Tanya, who doesn't know a soul. And she did confront him and speak to him in reference to this letter or this little quote of vengeance and anger and whatever, and.
Well, that's why I don't like us commissioners interviewing the process, because you're friends with him.
That's irrelevant, I didn't, there's no deal as far as friendship. It's hinged and based strictly on quality and his capabilities of completing a job of superintendent. That's what I look at.
I have those doubts, doubts there. I mean, like I said, he's a good worker and everything else, but I think just with what I've seen before and after we didn't hire him that time, what had happened, I thought, boy, we made the right decision there and not hire him because of his temperament.
Do you have any imperfections on the asset?
Yeah, I've got a lot.
Okay, it's all that you say, huh?
That's my opinion.
I believe that we should amend the motion to reflect the percentage that we're gonna reduce, so that's in there. So we'll have to vote to amend that motion and then vote on the amended motion. So if you wanted, if you wanted it to be five percent, seven percent, three percent, whatever. Make a motion to amend that motion, I know it's kind of confusing, but we.
I'll make a motion to amend that motion, yeah.
And to amend it to five percent reduction during the probation period?
And then a five percent increase after the probation period?
Right, essentially what you're agreeing to is you're gonna reduce the pay five percent and then if he goes through the probationary period and we agree to take him off probation, then. We, we, we would have to probably vote to give him the pay increase, so I mean, that would be the proper way to do it.
So now you're reducing from seventy-eight, you're reducing it to five percent?
Yes, so whatever, the seventy-eight, seventy-eight, seventy-three, and then we're reducing five percent for probationary pay. And then once he's off probation, that, that's the agreement here. I mean, if they, you want that motion, that's fine, but that's what we kind of.
So five, you look at, say eighty grand, five percent, you're gonna forty-five hundred dollars, correct? Roughly, forty-six, forty, forty-five percent.
You're talking about reducing it thirty-nine hundred dollars and change. So his actual pay would be seventy, his annual pay on that reduction would be seventy-four thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars.
Thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Right. Well, it wouldn't be for, it wouldn't be for this six, I mean, it would be, that's the annual. It was just took the annual, reduced it five percent, that's what your salary would be.
I could reduce, yeah, I can reduce it five percent. That's cheaper than what Los Guy's making.
Well, you just.
Just, that's what Los Guy was making.
But it's all until it's probation over six months.
Yeah, no, but even at that.
Well, that's why I'm saying a couple percent is a significant reduction. I mean, so whatever you want, make the motion to amend it to a agreeable rate, whatever you wanna do. Or you don't have to reduce it at all if you don't want, I mean, that's, I mean, it's up to the board here, this is.
I guess I just didn't leave it.
So no probationary pay then, basically, you're just gonna start him off with that amount, that, that's what you're agreeing to. I'm not trying to trick you, I might have a weird tone.
Right, right.
That's what you're agreeing to, you're just hiring at that rate and there's a six-month probation.
Look at whatever you wanna do then.
I think you gotta give them.
That's the motion and second right now, so there'd be no need to amend.
No amendment.
You gotta give them an incentive to come on board.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? I guess I'm just gonna add one more thing and that is this, this, this letter concerns me and I want it to be on the record. It doesn't concern me with his credibility or anything of that. What concerns me is that we've created this precedent that we're not supposed to hire people that have any imperfections in their file and now we have some of them with imperfection in their file. So as long as that's understood and agreed upon, that it's, it's about the consistency of it, that, that was a sticking point with the last superintendent and the main driving force, other than other reasons why he should get fired and then now we're kind of going that same boat, we're all wanted to understand, right?
How did this come into the file and who created it?
It would assume probably his superior, his superintendent. At the time would have been Private Francis Scrum, so.
And how were you made, how did this even come about?
I was told by, I was told by Marlis this morning, that's how I, I found out about it at.
I asked Marlis, I asked Marlis too.
Commissioner Everly did open up this request to me on Friday.
On all the, on all the.
Asked me, asked me to go through the three candidates that applied plus Russ to see if there's anything in their files.
Cause I remember at the time this happened, I remember that I think they just directed it to somebody out there and I was just wondering if it was on record.
That's just, I, it's, I don't want it to go unsent, that's all, of anything, I mean, I mean, I just, because the.
Well, it's been said.
Right, I, the reason why I say that is because the discussion of, did you do your research? Did you know this, did you know that? And the same type of letter came into the same form and processed to Skylar and was this mountain of an issue and now we have a similar one.
Well, I know there was another incident where you got let go from another job, or it was the same kind of thing.
I'm just talking about this incident at hand right here, just because that, again, in fairness to Skylar, because I think there was a lot of unfairness that happened with that entire process. And a lot of it seems to have been revealed today. I just, this, 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 this letter bugs me and it's honestly, it, it doesn't matter which candidate it was because the situation, you, you can't look at it and go, well, the guy had a, a letter and you know, it probably was a bad day and it's just, it's too bad, because now it's been this grievous precedent that's been established. How many times, how many times did it get brought up in this room? You know, I, I don't, it, it really bugs me because in my mind, it bothers me that we can't make a decision. You know, because now that decision, are the wrong people gonna go, well, it, it happened again? Are we willing to look at this and go, hey, it's worth giving the guy a chance? And if it is, that's fine. But it needs to be discussed for the clarity that I don't want next month, somebody coming in screaming that this letter exists.
I think a lot of the things with Skylar is he was not willing to move down into the community.
Right, I get that, but this is the topic that I've just, this is a sticky point, that has, it's been in the paper and it's been a topic of letters to the editor, Facebook posts, and it's gonna exist again, just so we're all aware. Sharon?
I think your HR person said too, cause when you brought that up, the lady had on the phone. She said, if it's something that bothers you, you have the opportunity to ask the candidate again and say, we're concerned about this and express your concerns and, and ask. I mean, I don't think that's out of line to give you assurance or to see how he responds to it. I think the HR lady did say that.
Right, and then she seems to be pretty confident that it's, I don't wanna call it a non-issue, but it was something that she even herself kind of stated that it's, you know, it's one of them deals. And I, I've worked at places and worked amongst a lot of men and you can have bad days and say things you don't mean. I'm not, I'm not here to pick on anybody named, but the situation is what it is. And I don't want, I'll just be blunt, I don't want Magrum getting criticized that this letter exists and the four of you guys sit there and act like it didn't exist. We're in for a penny, we're in for a pump, that's all I'm saying. This, this is out in the open and I'm making damn sure it's in the open. Because my lane name is even in this letter, which I don't think is fair, other than that I had a conversation with Russ because I felt like I knew him enough. When he called me, I talked to him and I was blunt with him. And now I'm named in a letter and it's like, this might even be the beginning point of the, of all criticism, I don't know. I just want it to be out in the open that everybody's, everybody's in on this vote, how you think is right and stick to it and not funneling blame to certain directions. That's, that's just the one thing I wanna make absolutely clear on this, if you're in, you're in, if you're out.
So I want to know if everybody was aware of everything. Checked out any of the other ones, but if they didn't, I mean.
It's been discussed now, it's disclosed, it's out in the open.
The public's hearing and they'll all hear.
It's the reason I'm being such a jerk about it, just saying. We're absolutely clear, set in stone, this is known. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion on the offering of Russ Lawler, the road superintendent position at the grade and step that equals seventy-eight thousand, seventy-three dollars with a six-month probationary period and no reduction in pay, just to be clear, that was not. We discussed it, but we didn't make a motion on it, it's clear, that's what his pay is going to be. Is there any more discussion on that motion or second? If not, Marcy, will you do a roll poll?
Everly?
No.
Hall?
Yes.
Magrum?
Yes.
Maturi?
Yes.
Miller?
So the motion is approved. Marlis, will you contact Tanya? Just whenever, I mean, whatever, anytime today, I mean. The other question, which maybe should have got addressed already in this, but was there any kind of a timeline? I mean, what's the situation, reason why, is because I know Russ has a contract with the project with the county.
He indicated at the interview, and she said, this is not out of line today anymore. He said, it'll take me a month to finish that project on Saturday. And she said, that's no problem. Two-week notice in nowadays setting, she said, it's not really common anymore. If you're a loyal individual to your business, most of the time it will be a month. So she had no issue at all.
So would it be acceptable to tell him that he's gotta start his position October first? I would say a normal day would be a Monday, so you'd probably request it on October seventh.
October seventh.
Does that, or, or, or the day before, the, because the commissioner meeting's October first.
So if he doesn't fulfill that, see adverse weather sets in a five-inch rain over a week and a half's period, what do we do?
So if it's a three-inch rain over a week period?
It can happen.
You're kind of.
Three-inch rain over a week.
I'm gonna give you some crap, listen, I think you have to have an expected upon date, you have to stick to that. And that's just, I, I, I can't, I can't say that you just go, well, we'll just let him start it and relax. Maybe that should have been a part of the motion too, it's something that kind of just hit me at the end. It's like, he's got obligations and I get that, but he's also got an obligation if he accepts this position to start at certain times. So you gotta pick a day, he's gotta start. And if he's not prepared to do that, or if he's unwilling to do that, I, I don't know how you guys wanna go forward, but.
So are we gonna put any kind of limitations on his personal business or what, what are we gonna do there?
Well, I don't think you really can. I think the biggest thing is, is if there was a problem that would arise later on, you'd have to just address it like an employee-type scenario. I don't, I don't even know how that would go about, but I don't, I don't think you could mandate.
So what did she say in the interview process?
About what?
About his, his side business.
She was gonna say, what do you want here to do, lack of equipment?
That's what he says.
Well, I mean, I think in the, in the meantime too, whatever he does in his own personal time is his own business. Now if it starts in, he starts doing something he shouldn't be doing, working one time or the other, then it needs to be addressed. No different than if somebody was out cutting hay while they're on the block, that, that's how you would.
Right, it's the same deal.
You would just have to treat it as an employee disciplinary scenario if that situation would arise.
So he has a commitment to some individual for four years and he hasn't gotten it to a hundred percent? And he wants to finish it, can he finish it on a weekend? On Sunday, again, he's on the phone.
As long as he's not on the clock, his time, his timeline.
Because I don't wanna hear the phone call, right?
Well, you're gonna, I'm just kidding, like, I mean. Well, you're gonna, I mean, that's always been an issue with any of this stuff, anytime there's an issue other than outside of the normal stuff, you're gonna hear about it.
It's as you do, you know, you do something like, whatever, on a weekend, yeah, you do it.
I think you need to do this with my, like my staff. Not a problem what they're doing on their time off as long as it's not a conflict of one position here, right? And that this is job one.
Right.
And if there are things that may come up, he should be having that discussion with the board.
Right.
Right, okay, so.
Kind of like he indicated, how did he say it, Craig, he said what? He's devoted and committed to seven twenty-four.
Yes.
Right?
Right.
If I recollect right, that's what he stated.
Yes.
And, wow.
If he's gonna do things like bid on county work or something, then that's gonna have to, I mean, that'll have to get addressed at a certain time or whatever, if this. There's nothing, you can't force him to sell pieces of equipment, he can own whatever he wants, so, if he wants to participate in certain things and it starts becoming an issue, the county.
But it's conflict of interest.
Right, then you address it as a conflict of interest, I mean, whatever that accusation is, you address it as a board, no different than if someone accused a current employee of doing something right now that shouldn't be, Gary Sanders has taken bouncer jobs at a strip club on the side, he needs to make sure, the reason why. Sorry, Gary, I had to touch on that.
You smile, but you're looking at it.
Well, you know, I'm trying to be like, yeah, Maturi includes specific details, I didn't want generalizations, you know, I'm gonna make sure what they're doing, but if you're gonna do those kinds of things, there's a proper process for those kinds of things, you can't be doing side work on company time, whatever you wanna call it. It's weekends and you wanna dig cull with your people, as long as it's on above board, there's nothing you can do about it, you just have to address it as they come in, so. That's the only fair and proper way of that, so, with that, the road superintendent discussion is closed. Okay, Marlis, you're gonna make contact with Tanya?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna need text her right now.
Okay, yeah, whatever. Well, I think we should take a five-minute quick recess and then all we have left is the building permits and the bills, cause that was the last table discussion, so we'll take a five-minute recess.